Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded June 21st, 2022.
People get into their fields, harvest their crops, and receive just compensation for their efforts. Being that is the summer vacation for our teachers and our most precious resource, the children of Portage County, grant them safe, relaxing, and refreshing time off in preparation for the upcoming school year in about 71 days. Not that I count it. We ask that you bless all the brave men and women of our county who are serving in the armed forces, keeping us safe. Bless their families as their loved ones are away from home. And finally, we ask that you bless and keep safe all the men and women who services EMTs, peace officers, and firefighters. Amen.
And I just want to let everybody know too, we've got a full agenda in case you haven't noticed. So don't be shy about raising your hand and getting on the board here so we can keep things moving. Thank you. Review and approval, approval of April 26, 2022 minutes. Moved by Supervisor Dubeck, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. There's Matt. Correspondence?
Chief Deputy County Clerk Lee Gents, out of county resolution, forward analytics slowing down Wisconsin's waning population growth, and Portage County Official Directory 2022 to 2023, which was left on the desks.
Presentations, number six, John Baker, Doral Renewables Vista Sand Solar Farm. Come on up. Up here, please, yep. We've got a solar project and we thought it was a good idea for you folks to be educated on what it is and how it's going to shape our county or what we're looking at.
Wonderful, and I was told about 15 minutes would be...
Please.
And with aim for the under, not the over?
Fifteen, yeah, if you can get it as close to that, it's fine. But if we go over a little bit, then we'll have questions afterwards.
Sure, okay, well, I'll aim to go through prepared remarks in, you know, under 10 minutes and if there are some questions after that.
Okay.
Great, well, I want to thank the board and members of the public for giving me the time to talk about the solar project. I know the community is familiar with solar. There's another project that's been proposed in very similar part of the county. And so at this point, even though it's still very early in our planning stages, we thought it would be beneficial to provide at least a few minutes and give a quick overview of the project we are targeting and where it is and why we think it's a good idea for the county. So the name of the project is Vista Sand Solar. I work for a company called Doral Renewables. We are the company that is developing the project. So it's located near or within the towns of Plover and Grant, south of 54, west of Highway 39 in Portage County. We are, the project we are proposing would be up to and maybe even exceed around a gigawatt of energy or 1,000 megawatts. By comparison, the project that National Grid is proposing is on the order of about 250 megawatts, so this would be a few times larger than that. And if built to its full capacity, it would represent an investment of around $1 billion for the 1,000 megawatts. And then for solar, a lot of the peak job impact you see is represented during the construction, where there would be upwards of about 500 construction employees helping build the project. This would likely, for a project this size, be spaced over a couple of years. It would be difficult to build a project this size within one year. So those construction jobs would be felt over a couple of years. And then long term, because solar is, requires no fuel inputs or there are not many mechanical parts, the long-term O and M is pretty light, but we would expect that to be about, just directly employed by the solar facility, about 15 jobs, although there may be some additional jobs as a result of local spending. So we can go to the next slide. So a big question with already is why is Portage County attracting so much attention at this time? There's the other project that's been proposed, we're actively engaged in developing a project, and we've even heard that there might even be one or two other companies also active in the area. And there are a few key reasons that I think make Portage County unique and well-suited for development of this type. I think one of the primary factors is there are a couple of very high voltage lines, 345 KV lines that come through the county. So these are really like the super highways of the electric grid. And it's a lot easier to try and connect close to those lines rather than going, you know, 20, 30 miles away where you would have to then build additional transmission lines just to connect to the existing grid. The topography and vegetation in the community is also very conducive to the project. So we, we, like most solar developers, are looking to avoid having to do any tree clearing or impacting wetlands, so there is plenty of suitable ground that we've targeted for leases that meet that characteristic of relatively flat and able to utilize well for solar. We also look to be set back from dense housing areas. So the areas that we're targeting are mostly either wooded areas or farm ground where there's pretty low, low housing density, which is again, is something we look for in development. So I think we can go to the next slide. And so what do we target with a solar facility like this? I mean, certainly there are the benefits that would be, the ground that we lease. We rely on the voluntary agreements from the areas where we're looking to host solar panels. So we, of course, have to make the economic incentives there for the underlying landowners that they, they feel as though it's within their best interest to lease this ground long-term, not necessarily be subject to some of the fluctuations that might occur when it remains in agriculture. This can, these are long-term, stable payments that the landowner can expect. But then solar also has a lot of benefits for the community at large. There are very sizable tax payments that would go into the community that hosts these facilities. They're currently around $4,000 per megawatt per year. So if we're talking a project that would be over 1,000 megawatts, that's considerable income coming both to the county and the townships. And at, for us, we are building all of the infrastructure, other facilities that we would need for our project, so we're not, none of those funds, we would be asking to fund any infrastructure improvements or the like. We expect if any roads need to be upgraded, that we would handle those. If any other infrastructure goes in, that's 100% paid for by the company. And of course, one of the primary reasons why you're seeing more interest throughout Wisconsin and even throughout the country is just you're seeing a lot of the utilities and other users, end-users of electricity looking to switch away from more carbon-intensive sources of energy to carbon-free sources. Of course, this would be one of those. About 10 years ago in 2010, Wisconsin had around 9,000 megawatts of coal-fired capacity. That's been cut roughly in half in the 10 years since then. And green sources like solar and wind are helping take its place. Then on the next slide. And so just a couple of other points that would be helpful to make. One, to be clear, until the project is actually constructed, there is no impact to the farming community, so we are not, they can continue to farm as we develop the project. The project is being studied in the queue right now, the interconnection queue, to make sure that the power can be put on the grid. And that process can take two to three years. So during, during that time, we're also going out and doing any necessary environmental studies. And throughout that period of time, farming would continue on the leased ground as it currently does. And it's only when we actually have all the permits and have the ability to interconnect the power that we would then construct on those parcels. As mentioned before, for the landowners, this does represent a good 30-year period of time where they can receive consistent rental income that isn't subject to any sort of commodity price fluctuation. It is long-term and stable. And another thing we're happy to be able to bring to the community is that for the ground underneath the panels, we do look to plant vegetation that can either help in terms of pollinator habitat or other plants that can help improve the soil quality over the lifetime of the project. So when we do talk to farmers, some of them say, well, we're interested in perhaps coming back to farming. And, you know, unlike something like housing development, you know, truly at the end of this project life, you can decommission and the ground underneath can have been allowed a generation to rest without any of the agricultural inputs, you know, no pesticides or fertilizers required for a solar facility, just low-lying vegetation that can help improve soil quality over that generation. And in that generation time, the farmer can then decide what they would like to do with the property, whether that's continue as a solar facility or go back to farming. And I think that's probably a good place to stop the prepared remarks, and I'm happy to take any questions either from the board or anyone else who might have them. I've also, we have Eric Calisto, who is an attorney that works on these projects from a permitting perspective. So a project this size would have to go for approval in front of the Public Service Commission, and so he can, he's also available to answer any questions on that.
Supervisor Madine.
I presume we're well-positioned for that because tonight we will be 18 minutes short of a 16-hour day. Okay, that probably makes a difference, even though we're in a different climate than some others. And I'm neutral about this, but I do have a question about the organization. And I'm really naive on it, just what I got in the newspaper, and I'm sorry. But, but is it simply a hedge fund-type operation that has a group of investors that will hire a professional organization to put this together? And then if that hedge fund is not successful in selling the energy to the various utility companies, simply can just shut things down? I presume that's the way it works, although it should be. You're not going to go into this without a strong level of success for this. But I'm just wondering what the organization is, so we can get a little bit better...
Yes, and you mean Doral as a company?
Yeah.
And just the way...
If it's a hedge fund of just a group of thousands of investors that say, this looks good, I'm going to put some money into it, unless it starts to falter, then I'll take my money out.
Yeah, no, it's a good, so just the general, I can answer Doral and the general way in which solar facilities are financed in the country. So Doral, we are a dedicated, we're Doral Renewables LLC. So the company, it is a relatively young company. It's actually founded by a couple of executives from some other well-known renewables companies that you may recognize. So a handful of those people kind of peeled off to form their own company. I myself have been in the industry 15 years, but with Doral for just a year. But it is a dedicated renewable energies company. So company was founded a few years ago. Our entire business is developing renewables projects throughout the country. We do have investors. There is a Doral Group, which is an international company. They helped finance some of the development activity. And then, and this is publicly available. There's also a large insurance company that provided additional financing. So the company itself is entirely dedicated to developing, constructing, owning, operating solar facilities and battery facilities in the country. And then we do have some, you know, like all renewables companies have some investors. When we actually went to go construct the project, again, if we're talking $1 billion of investment, it wouldn't just be our company investing in it. There would also be the normal suite of, you know, financial investors that would back any sort of large infrastructure project. So we, you know, at that time, when the requirements kicked up significantly, like any other developer and constructor of large power plants or infrastructure projects would, would go out for financing like that. I think one important point about renewables is that all the investment is upfront, and then after that, you're effectively generating energy for free. So I think the discussion about abandonment is incredibly remote just because you would, you would have invested all that money. And as long as there's a market for electricity, which hasn't waned in the last 100 years, there would be always somebody who would want to generate electricity at zero cost and sell it into the grid. And just as further assurance, as part of any Public Service Commission permitting process, we would expect to pose decommissioning security so that not, the project wouldn't be abandoned, but at the end of its useful life cycle, there would still be adequate provisions for any decommissioning of that facility.
Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, I have a question regarding not so much the financing, the money, the dollars, and the taxes, but I would describe it as energy sovereignty for our region. I just did a little quick sketch on the energy equivalent of what you'd be producing out there. So the way I figure, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but every five gigawatt hours gives you about the equivalent of 124,000 gallons of diesel fuel. Okay, so we're equating, why am I equating electricity to petroleum? Is that, as you know, right now, there's a global diesel problem, and it seems to be getting more severe because of the various, you know, supply chain disruption and so forth. We're going to be seeing a shortfall. Business Insider paper just had a piece on this a week ago, that the United States, the lightweight oil that we produce from fracking, they call it light tight oil or West Texas light, is not going to be able to power our agriculture, our over-the-road trucking and so forth. So it would be kind of a shame if all of this energy is being produced here in our county and then shipped off to Chicago, Milwaukee, Minneapolis, and other urban... It's almost like a, you could describe as energy colonization of all of Wisconsin. So have you looked into that concept at all about how this could be, you know, distributed in a way to benefit the local mobility? It's not just powering your house and your air conditioning, but increasing problems with transportation are going to...
50,000 homes. So much as you probably grow more vegetables in the county than can be consumed in the county, effectively, this would be energy that would help feed or put power, not just the county, but the region. The way the physical flows of the electrons, I mean, we would be putting it on to the electric grid that you draw, or most houses and businesses draw their power off. So as far as where the exact electron is going, it'd be difficult to know, but we would be trying to market it to Alliant and We Energies to make sure that it was... You know, power has to sort of be generated on a regional basis, but not necessarily a hyper-local basis. As far as transportation fuels, electric demand overall in the country has been actually relatively flat for about the last 10, 12 years, but I think there is a growing anticipation. You talk about global supply chains related to oil. I think everybody is anticipating that the next thing to become electrified in a greater degree would be the transportation sector. So I know that a lot of the, in addition to replacing aging power plants that are coming offline, the renewables field is also helping to meet that growing need for the electrification of the transportation sector. So I don't, I answered a question, I don't know if I answered your question, but hopefully it was useful.
No, I was, you made a good, that was a good shot at it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Splinter.
Real quick, if I heard right, that was the payback to the community, or the farmer, the county, the whole works out of that is 4,000 per megawatt?
That would just be what would be paid in, what's the technical term? The use tax, sales in...
I'm just saying, times 1,000 megawatts, you're talking 4 million dollars a year?
To the county and the, it would be split between the county and the townships in which the project was located. But I believe on other projects, it's typically about two-thirds goes into the county funds.
That's correct, and we've not done an analysis at this point, we will, that shows the current tax revenue from the land that'll be part of the project?
Close to the mic, please.
Sorry. We've not done an analysis yet, but we will, to figure out how much on an annual basis, the tax revenue that's currently received from this land. And based upon my experience in other projects that are smaller, I would estimate that this land probably captures somewhere in the range of between 100 and 200,000 dollars a year in local tax revenue. That will go away, but it'll be supplanted by the 4 million dollars a year. So obviously, a substantial increase in payments to the county and the local governments.
Supervisor Marassi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just touching on that, can you take that number and transfer it into like price per acre? What are we looking at for farmers here when they're renting out their land and you're generating that much electricity? You know, we get X amount of dollars per crop, but what are we looking at for electrical generation price per acre, approximately? I know it's a...
Sure.
That's a variation, I think, on what John said earlier.
Use the mic, please. For the people at home, that's like, thank you.
So as John said, right, the power from this farm and really from any generation, you know, the Columbia Coal Plant, it all goes onto the grid. And so as you look at the ability of this project to lower the cost that you pay your local utility, it will at a macro level. Because all of the energy that's being generated in the Midwest gets fed into a Midwestern grid, and there's a wholesale market for that. And while the wholesale market pricing is somewhat complicated, a major component of that is the price of energy. And it's called an LMP price, locational marginal pricing, so it's really localized. And that LMP price, because it's made largely of the energy cost, how much it costs to actually generate the energy, is a heavy driver of the cost of what we all pay at the wholesale level. And because, as John said, the energy itself is free, once the project is built, the LMP prices are going to come down overall. So at a macro level, the more solar you have, the cheaper it is. And this is, it's absolutely true, that it's cheaper right now to generate energy from solar than it is from coal or natural gas. It's going to, it's going to continue to make the overall wholesale prices cheaper. Your utility pays less for that, thus you will pay less. So it's not a one-to-one correlation.
So Vinnie, I think, I think what you're asking is what they're paying the farmer per acre?
Oh.
So, and I, Doral is renting or leasing that land from the farmer, so, and that's probably per farm contract price, so there's not a...
Yeah. So I'm not comfortable sharing the price you pay to the, you, I'm sure you could very quickly find a range. I, I'll just reiterate that we are, we rely totally on voluntary agreements. The way the contract is structured, it is for a 30-year term. Farmer is not, they're not asked to pay anything, not asked to maintain the site at all. So any, all the payment that they do receive, again, is going to their bottom line. But just given the confidential nature of those agreements, there's not really a number I can share in this forum.
Sure, and just for reference, you know, I've looked at numbers. You're looking at 800 to 1,200 dollars an acre for your energy, you know, what you're paying back. So if you compare that to crop prices right now, it is a sizable investment to our farming community, if they're willing to be part of this program. And I just would push back a little bit on saying that energy is free once you build it, having, you know, many, many years in this industry and sustainability in general, and, you know, being part of the Midwest Renewable Energy Association, which you should go to the fair this weekend. That energy is, is not free. You're investing in it upfront, and you have yours to pay back. So I think before we say things are free, we need to, you know, get the right language out there so our board understands exactly, you know, how this is all working out.
Sure, and, and so you're correct, we are, and I hope I made that point. We are, the entire billion dollars is invested upfront, recouped over the 30-year life. And I think, you know, Eric's point was that the marginal cost is zero. So that, you know, generating, once you've made that initial investment, each electron you produce is effective, there's no fuel cost associated with it. So it does provide that 30-year cost certainty and stability over the life of the project.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And the roughly 4 million dollars, two-thirds of it comes to the county annually. And then there's two, Town of Plover and Town of Grant. The other third would be divided up amongst them based on population or acreage?
It's, it's based upon where the megawatts of the project actually are sited. So that'll be resolved when we get a little bit closer. We will have a rough estimate, but by the time we file this at the Public Service Commission and in the JDA, we'll have an estimate of what that would be.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and I will stick around after, I'll be available if there are any questions that you weren't comfortable asking in front of the group.
One question out in the crowd, and I'm going to take that and we're going to move on, okay? Go ahead, sir. Stand up to the mic, please.
We're hearing you're getting information from Town of Grant? I'm sorry, oh, I said, we're getting information from Town of Grant. Could you tell me when you're going to be contacting the Town of Plover?
We actually did meet with supervisor...
No, you didn't. I said they met with a supervisor, he didn't say they met with the town of...
Okay, as far as I know, I'm one of the supervisors.
We, I'd be happy to meet with them at their earliest convenience. At part, while we don't have detailed engineering or know exactly where each panel will go, we are trying to socialize the information within the community as much as possible. So if there's a stakeholder we haven't reached yet, we'd be happy to do so whenever...
Well, because Portage Solar contacted us before they contacted the county.
And just to let you know, the other project that's being proposed by NGrid, they are in their development process, maybe eight to 12 months ahead of us. So we're trying to engage with stakeholders on an informal basis.
You have the same lawyer?
We, coincidentally, we do, yes.
He's a very good lawyer.
Yeah. And they happen to...
Didn't say you weren't.
Yeah. And they happen to do a lot of energy work in the state. So, but certainly, we're not trying to leave anyone out of the process. So I'll give you my card and we can arrange a good time to meet. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next item, number seven, Farming for the Future Foundation Food Plus Farm Exploration Center.
I could use a stepstool up here. All right, okay. Okay, well, thank you all very much for having us today. We're here to talk about the Food and Farm Exploration Center. My name is Candace Miller. I am the Executive Director of Farming for the Future Foundation. So we're going to give a quick presentation. We'll go through it as quickly as we can, but we're happy to take lots of questions around this project that's coming to our area and are interested to get your thoughts and feedback. So to start, slide. Okay, next slide. All right, to start, the Food and Farm Exploration Center is really the physical embodiment of our mission to bring people to the table around food and around agriculture. And so what we're doing is we are building a place in which we can do just that and bring people together in a physical way where we can learn about food and have conversations around something that's very important to our area and our county. Slide, please. And so at Farming for the Future Foundation, our mission is to educate current and... And so at Farming for the Future Foundation, our mission is to educate current and future generations about education, I'm sorry, about agricultural innovation and sustainability. We believe that building strong industry-wide partnerships is incredibly important. At the Food and Farm Exploration Center, we really want to tell that full supply chain story. So everything from seed and soil, all the way into how food is grown, what happens when it's out of the ground, how does that happen, what is the equipment, what is the technology, as well as, you know, how is it stored once it's out of the ground? What, what happens if it's processed? How does that work? As well as, you know, how does the market affect all of that? To tell that full supply chain story really well, we need strong industry-wide partners to tell their story really well within the center. And so we are working really hard to build those partners to ensure that we can tell their story at the center and give people a real understanding of what happens all the way through that full supply chain. And one note on that, we've been talking about this full supply chain story for a very long time, much longer than all of a sudden it's been kind of at the top of all of our conversations. So, and then, and then one other note I do want to make on this is that we are focusing on what we're calling the other side of the plate. So the state of Wisconsin has done an excellent job promoting dairy and talking about what happens in America's dairyland, but there is so much done in vegetable production and food grown for human consumption, specifically within our county. And what we want to do is really showcase what happens. And so instead of kind of duplicating some of those efforts, what we hope to do is complement the great work that has been done around dairy and animal agriculture and focus on that food grown for human consumption. So we won't be doing anything with dairy, but really working with those other groups to promote what they're doing, they can promote what we're doing, and really work together. Next slide. And so with that, I just wanted to just provide a quick slide, because really, Wisconsin is agriculture. It provides over 104 billion to our state economy while accounting for 11.8% of our state's employment. Although we are known as America's dairyland, we are highly ranked in the processing and production of so much more. So on the, on the screen, you can see we're number one in snap beans, which are green beans, cranberries, ginseng, number two in mint, number three in potatoes, which a lot of people don't know, sweet corn, carrots, and green peas. And so we want to highlight how much is grown in this area, why this is such a special place to grow food, and really people's connection to it, and help to educate people, but also be an industry hub here at the center. And then the next slide. So Wisconsin is agriculture, but Portage County is also an incredibly special place for growing food. It's the number one county in the state for veg, for the vegetable industry, and then there's a number of other facts and figures that I can share, but it creates a number of jobs. The vast majority of farms are family farms, and so we really want to highlight this really strong, powerful part of our county, from an employment perspective to the stories that it tells at the Food and Farm Exploration Center. Next slide. So the need for the center really came because we feel as though there's a profound need to reconnect people to agriculture. Kids today are roughly four to five generations removed from the farm. So even a generation or two ago, people could go to their grandparents' farm or their cousin's farm and spend a weekend or a summer learning about agriculture, understanding what it means to be in agriculture, and having a respect for the work that goes into it. Now that those connections have largely been lost, people's perceptions are often built on these outdated images of, of maybe what, the nostalgic view of farming, but what we hope to do is showcase what farming is today and where it is going forward. And so our approach is to build the Food and Farm, oh, sorry, slide, thank you, is to build the Food and Farm Exploration Center so that people can learn about their food and their connection to it through interactive exhibits, programs, and events. It will hopefully give people a reason to get excited about agriculture and ignite a lifelong journey of learning about food and farming. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the center will really serve as a portal to explore the many intersections of agriculture, whether that's through education, opportunities in STEM, economic and workforce development, as well as tourism. As we started to share more about our project over the last little over a year, the number one issue we're hearing within the industry and beyond is really around workforce development. There just are simply not enough people to do the jobs needed in agriculture and the aligned industries today. And so what we're hoping to do is to make some dents in the workforce development issue, both in the short and long term. One of the first things we're doing is we're developing partnerships around workforce development, beginning at the K through 12 level. It may feel very early, but what we're learning is that by high school, kids have already decided what they're not interested in and what they're not going to go into. And so what we want to do is to get agriculture on the radar of young people as a viable career option. One of the things that one of our leaders often says is that if you're interested in engineering, if you're interested in science, natural resources, technology, robotics, you're interested in agriculture, you just don't know it yet. And so what we're hoping to do is to create those connections so that kids can understand what the options are, whether or not they choose to pursue them, but we want people to know that there's a really great industry in your backyard. So if there's a job that you want to do, it might actually already exist, or, or maybe it's on the horizon. And so with that, they'll experience, hopefully, a field of diverse career opportunities that will help to promote and build the next generation of the ag workforce. One quick note is around educational workforce development. In addition to the center, we do have an education outreach arm that is developing curriculum for the classroom. It will cover agricultural topics, but also align to state and national standards that teachers already need to meet. And so if a teacher does our program or shares our lessons with our, with their students, their students will get exposure to some of these agricultural topics, but also the teachers will be meeting those state and national standards that are already required to meet. So hopefully not making their job any harder, but helping them and in turn helping their students. And so that's something that we just did our first pilot program this spring, and it just wrapped up a few weeks ago, and we're kind of learning about the feedback and have a lot more to share that is coming, but just another piece. So we'll have the physical center where people will have that hands-on interaction, there will be field study, field trips, and, and a lot of ways to get involved, but there's also the classroom aspect that we're developing. So next, on the visitor experience, we'll share about what the center is and what can happen there. So the center will be a few things. It will be a teaching and learning farm, it will be a science center, it will be a little bit of a part children's museum aspect, as well as a community workshop all rolled into one. It will really be a place for people to come together around their food and around agriculture to get connected. And so next, we will walk through the spaces themselves, just to give an idea of what's going to happen there. So the top-left image is the kitchen lab. So in this space, everything from the way that we'll configure the room to the furniture that we'll choose, will be able to be modified for different audiences, different age groups, so it'll be very multi-generational. During the day, we could have fifth graders in here doing a food science lab experiment, and in the evenings and on the weekends, we could have adults in here doing a cooking class or a cooking demonstration. In the top right-hand image, these are ag STEM exhibits. This is the most expansive area of the center that we've spent a lot of time developing. We are working with exhibit developers on this space to really tell that story of agriculture in a hands-on, fun way that, that is really dynamic and kind of ever-changing with our program. And so this is where we'll be telling that full supply chain story. You can see a little bit in this image, the soil cube, so talking a lot about soil, talking about water, talking about all of the resources that farmers use every day in agriculture, all the way to talking about, you know, how things are processed, how do they get to the grocery store, all of those things. We want kids to understand that, yes, you might get your groceries, your food at the grocery store, but there's a whole lot of stuff that happens before that. And so this is where we will, we will do them. One thing to note is that what we hope is that as people come in, they'll have reasons to come back over and over again. And in this space specifically, what we will not do is kind of funnel you through in a very specific way and then kind of send you out at the gift shop, the Disneyland model. What we will do is we will have it be that you can spend as much or as little time in whatever area you would like, and, and really have your own experience each time you come. The bottom left-hand image is our demonstration fields. We are planning for four one-acre mini pivot fields that will essentially be a mini working farm. Here we can showcase everything from sustainable growing practices like cover cropping and crop rotation, as well as equipment and technology that's utilized in agriculture today. Most people experience agriculture as they're driving 80 miles on a highway. And so what we're hoping to do is to bring the, the farm to them, so that they can have an onsite farm experience in a way that is safe, and in a way that they can ask questions, they can dig, and they can be a part of it, and they won't mess up a yield or, or anything like that. This is also a place where we can showcase research that's happening in agriculture today, partnering with universities, to duplicate research plots, so that if, you know, a six-year-old runs through a research plot, it doesn't ruin someone's life's work, but it really helps them to share with the public what's happening today, and to show how closely the universities and the growers work every day to ensure that they can, you know, grow their best yields and, and all of that good stuff. So the bottom right-hand image is also the Sprouts Children's Gallery. So this is that children's museum aspect, it's really where we're talking about a lot of these same topics, but doing it in a way where learning takes place through play. In addition to this, we are planning for a climate-controlled green, oh, I'm sorry, next slide, thank you. Okay, we're planning for a climate-controlled greenhouse. We live in Wisconsin, we can't get outside 12 months a year. And so whether it's January or July, we want people of all ages to be able to come to the center, get their hands dirty, have an immersive learning experience at, at the center. The top right-hand image is the Farm Tech Shed. So this is not our, our rendering, this is just to give you an idea and demonstrate what we're doing. It will be a very large space where we can pull in all different types of equipment to showcase the technology that's utilized in agriculture today. So we can bring in a very large harvester to showcase the scale and scope of these things, and then we can bring in an array of, of different smaller tractors, garden tractors, things like that, so that we can showcase all different types of agriculture within the center and how they utilize this technology. And then, you know, if you were to sit in a tractor today, it feels more like a cockpit. And so we hope to show the public that these things are, are really advanced and the technology, as well as the jobs that go into these, you know, servicing this type of equipment. This space we can also have be a training space, so Midstate could use this to do a training around mechanics and things like that, take one of these apart, have a class come in. We have people within the industry that would love to showcase our latest and greatest model of whatever that is in this space. So this will be a rotating showroom that will change all of the time, and again, hopefully to make the center really dynamic, so that people have a reason to come back all of the time. In addition to that, our Sprouts outdoor play area is an extension of the Sprouts Children's Gallery, so really just an outdoor way for the little ones to get their wiggles out, but still learning about how things grow underground. And then the bottom right-hand image is the Ag Lab Maker Space. This is going to be a hands-on, open-ended learning space, where, you know, we can do programming around anything from robotics and engineering to an art class here for all different ages, where people will have access to materials as well as expertise they might not normally have access to. In addition to all of that, oh, thank you, we are planning for some event and rental spaces. When we had very early conversations around the planning, we heard from the Department, Wisconsin Department of Tourism, as well as the Stevens Point Area Visitor and Convention Bureau, that there is in fact a need for additional rental spaces within Portage County. And so we, we heard that, and we are excited to offer a few different spaces for people to gather. One, this will be a revenue generator for the center, as well as a way for us to meet our mission of bringing people together. I'll just run through some of the spaces, just to give you an idea. This is really going to be an intermediate, intermediate-sized space, so not overly big, we can't do some of the things of the larger venues, but we're offering a little over 4,400 square feet in our largest indoor space, seating 220 people, standing 270. So in here, we could see a conference, a pre-conference site, a big meeting potentially, a wedding even. We also have a smaller conference room that would be more like a board style or for a smaller meeting group. And then we have some outdoor event lawn, event lawn space outside as well. So this could be anything from community-based, corporate or private outdoor event use, weddings, and maybe a, potentially a mini farmer's market, food truck festival, and so much more. And then we also have a number of non-traditional meeting spaces, but as someone who's planned a number of events in the area, you're always looking for a way to get creative to bring people together. So there's a number of other spaces within the center that we could also offer to the community as opportunities, as well as local groups, things like that. And so the impact of the center is really going to be a few things. The first, as we said, is really creating connections, so bringing people together, and that includes the industry and, and folks within our, our state. The second is we hope to reveal the truth that farmers and aligned professionals are business leaders, are innovators, they're making incredible advances in technology and sustainability, and to also increase agricultural literacy. We also hope to develop the next generation of the agricultural workforce, and one of the most important things we hope to do is to make Portage County and central Wisconsin an even greater place to work, live, and play. And so I think this is one of those things that could help be a differentiator for a region, for talent attraction and retention, for having people say, you know what, there's things to do here all the time, maybe I do want to raise my kids here, maybe I do want to stay here. And so we're excited to make an impact in those ways. In terms of location, sorry, I'm just running, running through those, sorry, Lee. In terms of location, the land for the center was generously donated by the Warzella family. We are really excited that land that has grown crops for generations is going to go on to tell the story of agriculture in perpetuity. And so the site itself is 24 acres of land just south of Lake Pacoa Park in Plover. And so you can see I-39 to the right of the screen, and then I have another slide to show kind of how we're planning to orient the site and the building along with the four one-acre mini pivot fields. The site itself will be walkable to a lot of the new developments, right next to Lake Pacoa Park redevelopment, Artisan Fair is very close, the new Century Curling Center. So there's a lot of exciting things happening in Plover, and we're excited to be a part of that. And so with that, I will say we did a feasibility study around location to determine what would make the most sense, looking all along the I-39 corridor. We looked as far south as Madison, we even looked at the Dells for a little while, and we really landed on Plover, because Portage County is where community and agriculture meet. There's so much rich tradition in agriculture, but there's also this amazing growing community that people are flocking to all of the time, and it just felt like the, the perfect place, and the numbers also supported that. In terms of timeline, I'll just give you a brief overview of where we've been. We started master planning for this project in December of 2019. It took about six months for that process. Once we had our master plan and our board felt confident in our ability to achieve it, we started to build our team, so a construction partner, exhibit designers, and an architecture partner. All of those groups kicked off design in January of 2021, and we started fundraising in the quiet phase in March of 2021. And so that's when we seeded our campaign cabinet to help us really share the project more broadly. We broke ground in spring of 2022 at the end of April, and our plan is to be open and operational in summer of 2023. And so with all of that, I think it's important to talk about the numbers and, and where we are. So a project this bold comes with a very big, bold price tag. Right now, we have a project range because of materials costs, as well as, you know, supply chain issues, and so, but it gives you a rough idea of breakdown as, as to how we arrived at that number, as well as where we are in terms of current fundraising. As I noted, we set, we seeded our campaign cabinet in March of 2021, and so in just a little over a year, we've been able to raise over 21.9 million dollars. And so although we still have a little ways to go, a ways to go, I shouldn't say a little, a ways to go, we feel very confident in our ability to achieve it based off of what we've been able to do in a relatively short period of time. And so with that, I would just like to show a sampling of our all-industry approach. So this gives you an idea of, sorry, of where we are in terms of growers, processors, and financial entities who are supporting the project. The next slide will also show you multi-generational farmers. This is a really important piece, because these legacies of these families has really been, oh, sorry, what has built our ag industry locally, but that has had, have, has had ripple effects across our country and our world. And so it's, it's been overwhelming, the support we've received from local growers so far. And then just a sampling of conversations still in progress. So these are folks that we're talking about the project with, that we hope will get on board in terms of their support. And then I just wanted to also quickly show our countywide partners. There are a number of different groups and organizations and things like that that we are talking with, so that we can continue to work together to collaborate. We want to be a really collaborative piece of this really strong community, and so we've been having these conversations as, as we've been, as the project has been progressing, and we're very grateful for the support that we've received from them. To talk about tourism and economic impact, Portage County generated over 118 million in direct visitor spending. This was up 21% from 2020, and then more than 217 in total. This was up 21% from 2020, and then more than 217 in total economic impact. And so our business plan for the project was conducted in 2019 during that master planning phase, based off of 2018 tourism data. It took a conservative approach, estimating that roughly 66,000 to 90,000 unique visitors would come to the center each year. So 2021 tourism data was just recently released, actually last week, from the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, and these numbers show a 61% increase in economic impact from our 2018 numbers. So therefore, we estimate our attendance to be significantly higher than estimated. And then I just put a little quote on here from Sarah Bush, current executive director of Stevens Point Area Visitor and Convention Bureau, who's been one of the people helping us from the beginning, figure out what makes sense for this center and, you know, what it should be and what it shouldn't be. And then one of my last slides is just again around tourism. Tourism is a number of things. It's economic impact. I already went through those numbers, but as a whole, Wisconsin tourism had a $20.9 billion impact on the state economy in 2021. Tourism is also jobs. One in every 21 jobs in our state is connected to tourism, and we will create 24 new jobs at the center. And then tourism is fun, right? It's the number one reason people go do things outside of where they live, because it's fun. And based off of everything I showed you, we hope the center will be a lot of fun. And so with that, we are requesting that Portage County also consider being one of our partners. A project this bold comes with a big, bold ask. And so with that, we respectfully request the consideration of a lead gift of $5 million to the Food and Farm Exploration Center from Portage County. I will end with just sharing our leadership group. Obviously, there's a lot of consideration to take in, so we'll just share all of this with you, and then we can obviously take questions. I did want to just touch on our leaders. Our Board of Directors comprised of a number of growers, folks within the agricultural industry, as well as folks in education, to ensure that we continue to meet our mission and share more about what we're doing, both in education as well as at the center. And we have a little, just a slide on our environmental beliefs. And at the end of the day, we feel as though that a healthy water supply, fertile soil, and clean air will nourish the development of healthy crops. And we are dedicated to being a leader in all of the issues surrounding responsible environmental sustainability. So all of this information, specifically this part, is in your packet that you all received. And so with that, we can take questions. And I also wanted to introduce our board member and founder of our board, Dick Pavelski, who's with me up here as well. So we'll kind of tag-team the questions.
Anybody have any questions at this time? Must have covered it.
Hey. All right. Oh, yes.
I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was fascinating. I'm really excited to see your project get off the ground. I do have a couple of questions in terms of, it's a lot of education, it's tourism. Is it a Chamber of Commerce as well? Is this, how are you?
Yeah, that's a good question. No, no, I think we want to work really closely with the Portage County Business Council and organizations that focus more on that, but so much of what is, what we're hearing is around the need for workforce development. So we want to be a part of that story. And so I don't think that that is our aspiration, but that's an interesting question we have yet to receive since so far. I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Well, I mean, I think, just to go back a little bit, what was the genesis and why did this project start? And a lot of it is because I personally, and people around our operation, got frustrated when we kept hearing people say, I don't know why we need farmers anymore, we just go to the grocery store for our food. And you see that all the time in social media. It was actually even stated on the U.S. House of Representatives floor by one of our fine representatives. And that disconnection is what drove it. So we started at Heartland Farms, actually, then bringing the fourth-grade tours out. And it got to the point where it was, my partner, who I handle operations, I mean, financing, government affairs and stuff for the farm, my partner came to me and said, Dick, it's clearly a project we need to do, but my guys are supposed to be planting potatoes today, talking to three busloads of kids, it's just not going to work on the farm. And then we had some issues with kids going around farm equipment, there were some safety issues. So that was when we decided that we really needed to continue the mission, but we needed to do it someplace off-site where it was on a small, you know, a safer location. And it was originally going to be a much, much smaller project that was pretty much, you know, a few of us guys. And then as we talked to people like the Rozellas and, you know, Ranky Manufacturing and PepsiCo, and they said, this is what should have been done 20 years ago, you know, and they've been very strong supporters. So that's kind of where it got the genesis of the project, if that helps.
Thank you. I do have a couple of other questions. I noticed you're promoting cover cropping and, you know, different levels of sustainable farming practices. Are you going to dig deep into regenerative agriculture? Because given the climate and kind of the status of Portage County groundwater nitrate levels and the contamination crisis that we're experiencing here, this seems like a great fit for you all to really help to mitigate this issue. What kind of, what kind of actions and education do you have moving forward?
In fact, one of the major food processors in the area has got a, they're building some regenerative ag farms across the world, and we've reached a partnership with them, and they're going to be doing some work here at this site.
Yeah. And then how do you, how does the, does this organization plan to help mitigate that contamination crisis that is here in Portage County? Because, you know, 22% of our groundwater, our wells in Portage County are contaminated with nitrate pollution, and that's a mix of, you know, additives to, from farmers and also manure, and then, you know, subject systems as well, which is, you know, less likely.
That's an issue that quite frankly gets very deep into science, and we would be here for three days if we really wanted to get into the details. And I'm perfectly willing to have that discussion, but, you know, it's just, it's a detailed science discussion, and things happen over time that change over time.
I also think this area is, the hope is really that we can have a place where people can have these conversations, right? Come together and have a transparent conversation around what is happening, and with growers that do this every day, as well as people that have concerns. And so one of the areas of the exhibit hall specifically looks at water and talks about our aquifer and how it works. But I think there's a lot of opportunity in these gathering spaces to have those conversations. One of the programs, we have a long list of programs we'd like to do, but one of them is, is, you know, Speak With A Farmer Night. So have different growers come in and talk about different issues. And then if there's, you know, people that have concerns, we can figure out the best way to facilitate these conversations in a way that people can have a voice and also have a source for continuing that conversation. And so I think it's more of the program piece of talking about, how do we facilitate these conversations in a productive way so that people can have a better understanding of what happens and the implications of that and the impacts on a number of different things, whether that's environment or, you know, how you get your food, things like that.
Sounds great.
Our partnerships with the university, as well as the tech school and things like that. As new practices get developed and proven to basically mitigate or deal with those issues, the outreach will be in place as well to spread that, those practices.
Yeah. And so an example would be to have, you know, someone from the university or someone from, you know, a researcher to come and talk about a new research program or a new strategy that's being utilized and how it works and what it does, and to just kind of showcase the really close connection between the research and what is being done to ensure that growers are being sustainable and that they are utilizing, you know, practices and things like that.
Sounds like a great place to have another beer summit, which I hosted, I hosted five years ago. I hosted a beer summit with local farmers, mid, large-scale, mid-scale, and then also local advocates for clean water. And I made them sit down and drink beer and talk about the problems. So I would love to do that again.
Yeah, absolutely. That's the exact type of event we would love to have, and beer is always welcome. We're in Wisconsin, so, yeah, absolutely. That's a perfect example.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, real quick question. I noted that you mentioned the need for workforce. And I was going to say, welcome to the 2020s because in our county agencies and our non-governmental nonprofit groups, manufacturing, really, every, every agency that employs people in the county is looking at this problem. So I would urge your center to do devote some thought to, to the people who do the value-adding, that is, the labor force, how can you channel more of that added value into their home, into their home finances so that they can, you know, afford houses and vehicles and be able to live a good life in this community in Portage County? So just give it some thought. I don't expect, I don't have a quick guess and easy answer for you on that.
Yeah. No, that's a really good point. I think one thing that comes to mind when you say that is there's a lot of really great well-paying jobs in agriculture that people aren't, you know, don't necessarily either know exists or aren't taking. And so we want to help, this is, you know, it's a big problem. As you said, it's not something we'll do overnight, but to help people make those connections, whether it's, you know, kids in high school, people in technical schools, or also lifelong learners that are looking for a change and have skills but want, don't know how to use them. And so we're working with Midstate Technical College to develop some programs where we can connect people with interests that they have or, you know, backgrounds into roles where they can have a good-paying job right here in our community. But those are, you know, obviously still in development, but it's an important piece of it.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the mission is, as I think of it, is talent retention and talent attraction, because it, you know, better-paying jobs, people knowing about those better people, and then facilities like this where you've got a children's museum and other things, making it a better place to live and people to get together is a, we hope is a winning combination. We believe it is. Supervisor Sislevich.
You donated $30, $35 million on a 24-acre parcel. That seems small to me. So moving forward, is there any intent of expanding this property? Is there a availability to do that? And going forward, is there going to be another ask for donations moving forward?
I don't, no, I don't anticipate. The business plan, basically, has got a $2 million annual operating budget. A million and a half of that is projected to come from revenue from the facility. So we need, we know in advance that we need to raise about $500,000 a year ongoing. Several foundations that we have dealt with already, and a couple of families have got a policy of not donating to bricks and mortar. So bricks and mortar is really our biggest hurdle right now. Several of them, well, first of all, there's about three years of operating funds. There's over a million and a half already committed to us that are restricted to operating funds that can't be used for the building, for those, for those type of groups. So from an operating standpoint, on a go-forward basis, we feel very, very confident that that's more than well-covered. As to your expansion project, there is room for expansion as far as putting another building up on the north side, and there's parking, there's room to double, almost double the parking that, that we're going to put in initially. But then we've had discussions with the Village of Plover, and they've got parking at Pacoah Park. And then we do have a right of first refusal on another 14-acre adjoining parcel. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yep. Next, number eight. Tegra Group, introduction of the Tegra Group and presentation of master facilities plan. Don?
Space and Properties in Portage County has been working on a plan to upgrade our buildings and bring our buildings up to the standards that we need to get them to. We've been doing this for many years. We get to a point, and we fail. We've been looking at ways to develop a plan. How do we develop this plan? We're looking at developing a long-range master plan. So we have hired Tegra. Tegra will help develop that plan. They will take a look at all our existing programs that we have done in the past, things that we've looked at, things that we've talked about, the options we had. They will come back with a plan that will show us where we should go, how we should keep maintaining our buildings, and where we need to put our time. We have already have, we already have an architect on contract. That architect will work with Tegra. We are in the process of completing a procurement process where we will hire a contractor, a construction manager at risk. All these tools will come together with Tegra, bringing them together, and they will come back within the next 12 months with a plan of what do we do with the buildings we have? Do we remodel? Do we build new? Do we go to a different site? All this will be addressed. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Tegra, Mr. Nate Pearson, who is the owner and partner in the firm, and Mr. Mike Van Krij. They will tell us what they intend to do for Portage County, and at the end, I will answer any questions that we may have.
Mike, Nate.
This is Nate. Hey, good evening. Thank you. Thank you for that introduction. So I'm Nate Pearson, and Mike is going to introduce himself here shortly. We've got a quick agenda. We wanted to walk through who Tegra is, you know, our company, and then what an owner's representative does. And then Mike's going to come up here and, excuse me, talk about some of the things we've already started on for the past information, how we've organized the group, and then get into a little bit of schedule and how we're going to present to you guys in a meeting cadence. And I can come back up, talk about next steps, and answer any questions with Don. So Tegra Group has been in business 26 years, and we are, we do business in the Midwest. Yeah, sorry, next slide there. Thank you. North and South Dakota, Iowa, Minnesota, and Wisconsin, those are our, that's our market. And we're strictly owners' representatives. And what that means is, we also do real estate practice with Integra, but we don't invest in buildings. We don't work for architects. We don't work for contractors. We don't work for real estate brokers. We're strictly on the owner's side. And we do that to avoid any conflicts of interest, so that you know when we give advice or we give recommendations that Don talked about, you know that it's honest, it's straightforward, it's fact-based, and it's believable mainly. So we've been dead focused on that. Don't move off of that bullseye. That's what we do. We work strictly for owners. Think of us as an extension of your staff, or actually, as a part of your staff. We have, with Integra, we have former people who have been in the industry of design and construction and real estate. So as an example, I spent 20 years as a contractor, and now I've been eight years at Tegra. Mike, I think about 20 years as a contractor as well. We also have people who have worked in architecture firms, have a former banker, a lawyer, a facility manager, and then also an interior designer. So we bring that staff to you. You'll see Mike and I mainly, but we also will tap into other resources at Tegra if, you know, comes up on interior design and even some financial analysis, we'll tap into our other colleagues at Tegra. The main reason we hear over and over why hire an owner's rep is to level the playing field. We review every detail of the contract, every nickel of the budget, every pay application, every quality assurance program that goes into place. We are reviewing that on your behalf, and we'll come back with recommendations, risk analysis, positive reinforcement. I mean, we'll do the whole thing. But that's what people have told us why they like us. It's mainly to make sure that you're getting the quality building that you deserve and honest feedback. So next slide on what does an owner's rep do? I'm not going to read, I'm not going to read all these, but it's kind of, you know, what do you expect out of running a project like this? We're talking a lot of, a lot of money. We're going to put the whole picture together. We're going to have a budget for you. We're going to stick to that budget. We're going to talk with the architect that Don had mentioned. We're going to make sure that they're drawing to the budget, and we're going to work with the construction manager at risk to make sure that, you know, they're getting fair pricing, the bids they need, coordinating the work, the schedule. And in this market, I've heard it through two presentations, labor. You know, we're going to make sure that, you know, we get the right labor, we get the quality labor, and sometimes even, well, a lot of the times, keep the workforce here because you're spending the money, so let's make sure that it comes back into the community. So just a little bit on high-level stuff there. We could go into a lot more if you have questions at the end. I'm going to turn it over to Mike real quick, just to talk about our past history, what we've already studied, and going forward. talk about our past history, what we've already studied, and going forward.
All right. So I like to walk when I talk, so this is going to be harder to stand still. The, so kind of what have we done so far? That was one of the things that we were asked to, to talk about tonight. And we have met with Space and Properties. We've been working with Chris. We've kind of been getting to know the county and understand some of those roadblocks that Don had talked about earlier. So we took a look at the past history. There's a lot of it, as Don alluded to. We started to weed through it. There's a lot of good information here. So we've been taking this information. We've been having meetings. BWBR is still involved with the project, and we're working through to figure out what can we do with that information so that it's useful going forward, and it's not money that I'll say was spent with no value from it. So we've been looking at the past. Go to the next one. And maybe just shrink down on that. So one of the things that we heard loud and clear was let's get organized because as we listened to different reasons why some of the, the pauses or things have stopped in the past, what we understood was that there seemed to be a lot of people and everybody wants to help. Everybody had really good intentions, but we said, okay, we need to get organized because there's an appropriate level of involvement from the different, you know, committees, counties. There we go. Sorry, I had to zoom into it on this screen. So that we could understand who needed what information and who were the decision-makers. And so again, we worked with the people in this room, particularly starting with Space and Properties and through purchasing. And we said, okay, let's think about this. And we figured out who are the right people to be involved from subject matter experts, who are going to be the right people to be involved to communicate back to the appropriate boards, maybe communicate all the way down to the outside parties. And then let's get the right people put together in what we're calling the Master Planning Committee, which is the blue box up on the top. And at the end of the day, that was kind of a first task, is to get that group identified. And that's going to be that group that is going to be the day-to-day, you know, as we get our every other week meetings or whatever we determine is the best approach, that's going to be the group that we're really going to be working with. Now off to the side, there's that orange box. And that's actually what we're working on, and Nate will touch on it a little bit more, is this Construction Manager Selection Committee. We're working through that right now. And again, let's identify who that appropriate people are and the appropriate size group so that we can get the decisions made, move forward, and keep this project at the cadence that it needs to be. So let's go. So what we also put together was what does this look like over the next 12 months and a little bit further out so that we can get the decisions back to the people, or get the information back to the people to make the decisions in the correct timeframe? Not too much information, but not too far apart, and what's the appropriate level? So as we worked through with the group, we laid out all the tasks on the side, and this, I think, will be available, anybody that wants it in more detail later. And then the red blocks were what we found to be the really important piece to understand when we're going to come back to, whether it's a Space and Properties Committee, whether it's going to be to come back to this board, or when it needs to report or ask for, I guess, that approval to go to the next step. It might be a contract. It might be a design. It could be any of that information. And so we want this group to know that we are fully aware of the need to come back and speak in front of you at the appropriate times with the appropriate information. This is our second pass, I would say, at getting it correct. And it's a living document, so we'll adjust it more if people need to see more or see less. But again, the idea is keep the information at the correct level and let the correct people make the decision, or let the correct people make the recommendations, and then bring those recommendations to the correct level to make the decision. So we did add a note in here, verify deliverable date with Portage County, BWBR, and the Construction Manager at Risk. Our first big deliverable, which we will know more about in about a week because we'll get our last partner on board, and then we'll say, okay, is it September? Is it first of October? Whatever that would be. So again, that's just my example that this is in a living document, that we're going to keep it updated so we make sure that we're, we're staying on task. I think that's, go to the next one. If you want to.
Yep. Thanks, Mike. So we always like to, you know, end our meetings or have an action plan. I mean, we have tools and places, you can see, but our next steps, we're working already with BWBR to extend their contract. Their contract has, is still there, but their dollars have expired, so we're working with them to get the next scope to cover the next six to eight months. So we'll bring that back to the, these folks, or I think you, and then, and then you guys here soon. And then tomorrow, we have our Construction Manager at Risk interviews. So we'll be spending the day with, with Chris and the folks on the committee. And I think it's next Tuesday, we are going to have a recommendation in our small group to move forward with the Construction Manager at Risk. That's the last party we need to bring to the table so we can start our design, start our cost information and scheduling. And then we were also asked, and it's been mentioned a couple of times, how are we going to maneuver through your existing buildings, or maybe even a greenfield space somewhere in the city? And so we're going to start that endeavor already. Mike and I have started kind of outlining a spreadsheet on costs and analysis, and what does it take to move? What does it take to remodel? What does it take to repurpose? So we are at the forefront of that as well. But that, that's a big deal. We need to, we need to kind of bring it big and then get small and come with a recommendation. So that's what we have prepared. We can answer any questions you may have. Any questions?
Any questions? Look forward to the chart that he showed with the red dots and we'll advise as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Public notice. Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time. With such comments, subject to reasonable control of the county board chair as set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. Think everybody has signed up that wishes to speak. We've got one more. Two more? The 12. 12? The diversity inclusiveness?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes. Nancy Raffey. I'd like to speak on the healthcare center. Items 26, 27, 28.
Okay.
See you, guys. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Number nine. Appointment Julie Moore to Land Records Modernization Committee for a two-year term expiring April 15th, 2024, 2024, to replace Don Jankowski as the Finance Committee Representative. Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10. Appointment of Scott Sike to the Transportation Coordination Committee for a two-year term expiring April 15th, 2022, to replace Dennis Robbie as a Finance Committee Representative. Motion by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Weaver. Discussion. I'm sorry, that was Supervisor Rockman. Well, you're both new, so.
Same hair.
Yeah, same hair. No.
Same mark here.
So it was, seconded was by Supervisor Rockman. I apologize. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Confirmation of county executive's appointment and reappointments. Appointment number 11. Appoint Ray Reiser to Park Commission for a seven-year term expiring June 30th, 2029, to replace George Kraft, who is termed out 14 years total. Motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. This by state statute for this position is a seven-year term. So it's, it's a long one. Any other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12. As we start, number 12, number 13, number 14, and number 15, this is something that is, we'd better get it on the floor first. Appointment of Valerie Hartman to the Diversity Affairs and Inclusive Committee for a two-year term expiring April 15th, 2024, to replace Christopher Benny. I'll take a motion to put it on the floor. Motion by Supervisor Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Sike. This is unusual in the fact that our appointments, in most cases, as a group, all came forward when we had all of the others listed on the sheets. These were not ready to go yet, and because it is unusual, they are listed on here as separate appointments by our statute. And I will let the corp counsel speak to this after I'm finished. But to our, our ordinances, the executive has different authority as far as their appointments than the county board chair does. And again, the corp counsel will speak to that. This is a committee. These are listed on here, and they're, because of the other ones, they're replacing certain individuals, but you can mix and match. You have four people on one committee that are being reappointed. They were appointed first by Executive Holman for a two-year term. That two-year term has expired. And now we have Supervisor Pavelski, who is appointing four people for that same committee for a two-year term as well. It doesn't mean that this one is replacing this one, this one's replacing this one. It can go whatever it is. It's four people that were on there, and their term was expired, and four people that are being appointed to the committee going forward is what the executive is bringing It is acceptable because our ordinances allow it when the county board chair makes recommendations for committees, for us to talk about changing people on and off of the committee. For the executive, it's not acceptable for us to change those people. We vote and either accept the committee, or we don't accept the committee, and then it goes back to the chair, or back to the executive, is the way that it is supposed to be handled. And part of that is because of the seminars and the different things that I have been to. And I think, did they talk about that, Vinnie, at the cows as well? Our, our Wisconsin Counties Association in Wisconsin Rapids about the, about the authority to that?
Yeah.
We have two different bodies of, of power in Portage County, and that is by design. We have the county board, which is all of us. It is one body of authority and power. And we have the county executive. We have a county executive because the public believes that they want to have someone that speaks for the people and not an administrator because the administrator answers to the board. We can debate that for a long time, but that's what we have right now, is an executive and not an administrator. Along with the executive and the struggle of power between the board and the executive, there are certain things that are granted to the executive, and there are certain things that aren't. One of the things is the appointments. So I believe that you could have 20 different names, put the names in a hat, draw them out, and you could probably have five, six, seven different scenarios. Every one of those could be correct, but the one that needs to be correct or thinks it's correct is the executive that brings it forward to us to decide whether that's what comes forward. Any committee that he chooses people to put on, he's putting them on them. He wants it to, he thinks these issues are important, or we think these issues are important, and that's what they want him to concentrate on or work on and go forward. So I wanted to state that. And Mr. Hickathert, if you can share with me to the documentation that supports what I've just discussed.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So as you had mentioned, under Portage County Ordinance, Section 3.1, Point C, that talks about the appointments. Section 1 talks about the appointments of the county board chair that go through executive operations and are subject to both amendment and confirmation by the county board. Under Section 2, the county executive appointments, they're subject to confirmation through county, or through executive operations and the county board. So there is specific reference to amendment for chair appointments, and it's specifically excluded from county executive appointments. And the language in the county executive appointments section of our ordinance is also mirrored in state law regarding the county executive's authority, subject to a confirmation by the county board. So what I would say is for 12, 13, 14, and 15, this is one slate for the board to vote on without amendment. So I think it's either an approval or a denial of all, all of these as a single slate.
So I will start with Supervisor Weaver.
I just had a quick clarification. I think I understand procedurally, but would like to make sure. So in the event that this were voted down tonight, it would go back to the county executive. The county executive would come up with new proposed appointees. It would then go back to executive operations because pursuant to the ordinance, they have to confirm it. And then it would come back here to the full board again. Is that correct?
Correct.
With, well, I would add one clarification. It would go back to the county executive for consideration. You wouldn't necessarily have to choose separate people.
So the county exec, right. The county, when it, if, if it was turned down or denied, it goes back to the county executive to come up with any of those changes or, or whatever that looks like. Then again, it would have to be approved by executive ops and then back to the board.
But.
Or it could be the same.
Or, yeah.
But it, our, our ordinance for this particular committee does seem to contemplate that the county executive has to put four citizens on it, so.
Correct.
Okay. Because you, you were suggesting that he may not have to act on it if it went back.
No, no, I'm not, with the correction of, I didn't say he wouldn't have to act. He'd reconsider. He'd have to bring forth members, citizen members. He might elect not to change that.
Understood.
The people that he's setting forth.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. And that's the discussion time for 30, it's like a 30-day cooling off for gathering information. Supervisor Madine, then Supervisor Sike.
Our attorney stated that this would be reviewed as a slate, but we do have individual agenda items on this. And I think it would very, would be appropriate to follow the procedure of having individual votes for each agenda item. Otherwise, we could end up with a real mess of someone may be opposed to one appointment, and then the whole slate may, may turn down because of that, and then the committee couldn't operate in the meantime. So, so I would really appeal to us to have, as we've already have a motion on the floor for want the first agenda item, that we just continue with that same process through all four items. Thank you.
So that's where, if for any reason that any one of the four was voted down, the whole committee would go back. It wouldn't, you wouldn't have the three. It's, it's, it's all or nothing, even though they're, they're listed because there is no resolution that follows it. There isn't a resolution because appointments, it's just, it's just brought forward. There isn't a, a resolution. They're just listed. So whether they're listed on the agenda or they're taken as one, and that's probably, that's the area that, as we got into it after executive ops, that where it was listed there separately as well, that it probably should not have been listed. It should have been all four of them because it has to be a committee of all.
Somehow, I don't, I don't, I don't see any statute that warrants that interpretation. It seems to me that you, as we always have in the past, individual appointment by individual appointment. Now, I don't, I don't mind.
So.
If you actually treat it as a slate, and then the entire slate comes back if there's, but it, but it seems to me there should be an individual discussion and, and a question on each of the individual items.
Supervisor Sike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like the owner of the motion to reconsider making the motion to include as a slate so we can further the discussion.
As a what?
We need the owner of the motion to amend his motion to consider 12, 13, 14 as a slate so I can second it and we can resume discussion. Thank you.
I think that's a permissible way to proceed. On the other hand, what I would comment is that if you take it by individual agenda items, and that's permissible, but if any one of these is voted down, I mean, I think that's essentially. that's essentially tantamount to an amendment, which is not permissible by our ordinances for the county executive appointments.
So if we go through these and just hypothetic, three of them pass and one of them doesn't, what happens to the committee? Because that, that is an amendment to that. So who made the motion?
I, Don.
I did.
Don, and who seconded it?
He's got it.
Don, are you willing to make that motion? It's, it's.
It's, then it's all, one goes down, they all go down, correct?
Yep. It's, it's a committee. It's, it's the way that would have been listed on the sheet had we done it earlier. Had he put the names on there, they would have been listed and we would have either accepted or denied the committee because we don't have the opportunity to amend it for the county executive's appointments.
I'll change my motion to make it as a slate then.
And a second by Soik. So I need to take the call on the amendment. So all of those in favor of amending it and taking it as, as 12, 13, 14, and 15 as one and then it was either an up or down vote on the committee. State, state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And the clerk will call a roll.
We have public comment on these items.
What does that vote on? Was that just simply to?
Just simply to put them together as a group.
As a slate.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that? Everybody? Supervisor Dubek, you look puzzled yet? No? Okay.
So what we're voting on right now is just?
Is just.
12, 13, 14, 15 to count.
Is just a group. It's, it's the committee.
Okay.
Okay?
Question.
Supervisor Pataki.
What will happen if we vote this down?
Goes back to.
Goes back, goes back, goes back to the committee. So Supervisor Weaver.
I just had a question about the comment that it would be tantamount to an amendment. And again, this is obviously all hypothetical at this point, but Al, I think you suggested if we had three that passed but one was voted down, it seems to me that it would go back to the county executive. It wouldn't be an amendment. He would simply have to act on his final member that he was appointing for the four. So I guess I just don't understand that interpretation.
The appointments are not subject to amendment. If all of the appointments are not affirmatively approved by the county board, that would appear to me to be an amendment of the, of the appointments that the county chair or the county executive has appointed in the executive operations, a committee has already approved. So to me, it's, if you're not voting affirmatively for all of them, that's changing what he has set forth, the county executive has appointed, the executive operations is approved, and this board is considering. So any change to that, to me, would seem to be an impermissible.
Supervisor Splinter. And this again, we're only discussing the amendment here.
Right. I, I think we're, this all got muddied. I mean, he, the county exec has a right to appoint four people for a two-year term and it should have just been that, this person, this person, this person, that person for a two-year term. We don't have to say he's replacing that, he's replacing this. That's what got, that's where it got muddied on our agenda.
Right.
And if we can get back to, we've been given four people to look at as a slate and we vote them up or down after discussion. So that, to me, would make sense.
Yeah, and, and part of it is, is the fact that it's, it's the practice, you know, for an appointment and we just went through that with Supervisor Mora and Supervisor Soik replacing an individual, one for one, someone that was coming off and somebody that was coming on. That's where it gets confusing because we're replacing those people, but here we're replacing the committee. And it, so why they're listed separate, there's no resolution that follows it. Supervisor Dodge, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. I'd like to remind the supervisors and many of us weren't here at the time, but when it was being discussed in the community about having a diversity inclusivity group, many of us felt it should have been a community group, which would have had their own board of directors and they could have chosen the people on their committee. But there was an absolute insistence that it be under the county umbrella. So now we deal with county procedure and policy and that's all to say. It may have been better to have done it as a community group with a board of directors.
Anybody else have their hand up? Supervisor Dubek.
Are we voting on the motion that was made?
No, we're voting on the amendment of grouping them all four together.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could we call a vote?
So this is the, on the amendment only, and this is to group the four together. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Amendment carries, I'm sorry. So now back to, we have public input.
First will be Eric Olson. Good evening, Eric Olson. I live in Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I just wanted to bring some background to this conversation related to county executive appointments by pulling out some language from candidate John Pavelski. So just to set the tone for your conversation you might have here. My promise, John promises to be a bipartisan county executive that is not connected to any special interest group and has the ability to work with all political parties and represent Portage County as a whole. John is running as a citizen in Portage County and does not represent any particular party or special interest group. He's going to represent all the people of Portage County regardless of their personal political views. As county executive, he will not condone special interest groups or collaborative groups that might attempt to influence our elected officials or our county staff, circumventing the will of the people of Portage County. The county executive is only held accountable for his or her actions every four years, and this is Mr. Pavelski's quote, and I think that is extremely risky for the county. He goes on, the potential for advancement of the executive's own special interests and the ability to use his or her influence and power over the county departments that he or she supervises is very possible and very concerning. The gutwells, he adds, is that the county executive can't appoint too many of his or her comrades to departments because of the existing checks and balances that requires appointments to have county board approval. The county board and the committees they set up should determine the primary direction and priority of the services those unelected departments provide to the people, not the county executive or his or her assistant. And then he closes, as county executive, I will not act independently and will always work with the elected county board, county supervisors, and county committees and ask them to hold me accountable to the people on a daily, weekly, monthly, or yearly basis as needed. The tone I ask you all to present then is to hold this accountable, to ask whether this slate really represents the people. And I would just point out that two of the people out of this four were political candidates in the spring, supported by the Portage County Republican Party, who distributed Mr. Pavelski's material to lists provided by, by the party. So to pretend as though this is nonpartisan, I think is a little bit too far to believe. Thank you.
Amy Wilma Farkas.
Ooh, try that again. Hello, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Wilma Farkas and I'm actually from Annes, Wisconsin. I served on the DAI committee initially. I was one of those that was appointed and then removed when County Pavelski, in fact, took his spot. So I just want to really take a couple minutes to go over the events that happened and why in the end I have decided to postpone my daughter's college trip. I have taken out hours of my evening and I'm showing up here to tell everyone my truth and what happened. The first time that Pavelski tried to contact me, it was on 4/24 and we did place some phone tag as he was trying to talk to me about this board appointment, what my vision was for the board, et cetera, or at least that's how it was presented. Our first conversation began by him asking repeatedly if I knew who Vinnie Morressi was, which I didn't. I didn't know Vinnie Morressi from Bob or Tom or Janet Morressi. I didn't know who he was and he continuously asked. The next question that he asked me was my thoughts on affirmative action. Did I believe Katanji Brown Jackson was in fact qualified to sit on the Supreme Court or if I thought she was there by affirmative action? At that moment, I knew that this conversation was going down the wrong road. As someone who considers themselves a registered Republican, as someone who considers themselves primarily conservative, I know he was trying to let me test me in a way that I was not comfortable with because those questions have nothing to do with diversity and inclusion, especially in Portage County. There is a direct business case for diversity and inclusion in Portage County. Right now, studies show that companies that invest in DEI are 35% more likely to outperform their counterparts. Harvard Business Review. They are 70% more likely to be able to break into new markets. McKinsey. They are 19% more likely to have higher revenue than their counterparts as far as gender parity. I work in human resources. I have tried very hard to make sure cease or fore with companies, for companies in this area. This is already becoming economic life or death and it's imperative that the county executive take this seriously. I became extremely, extremely disenchanted when I had breakfast and Robyn started to ask me questions about whether or not Pride Month should be available for everyone in the library. And I started to realize that the reasons that they brought me on and to talk to me, they were not being intellectually honest. This was dishonest and it was more or less about me and more about them, not wanting people to fight for these issues. What was even more disturbing to me was to find out who he nominated, not because these people have anything wrong with our character, but because it turns out that they were basically having all of their information distributed at the same time. We just heard him say, we don't want cornyism here. I just sat here and watched another presentation and I don't know, but my understanding is that that farm presentation may actually be supported by Pavelski Farms. Again. So what I'm asking you is to really take a look at who he nominated. Jennifer Bushman seems very lovely. I don't know her. I don't know you as a professional. I know what I saw on LinkedIn, but I'm delighted that she did just take a scoreboard position, if I'm correct. You are director level at Anthem, which takes up a lot of time and energy. And so my question for you and all of those that are nominated is, do you have the time and the passion to commit to this for Portage County? Because we don't have employees. We don't have the people and we need to learn how to build an inclusive committee so that people can say all the wonderful things that I saw when I first came to Portage County. So, so that in mind, please take a little bit more time to review this. County Executive Pavelski, I ask you to really make sure that whoever you do nominate, that you're sure that they're willing to commit the time and the energy to really make a difference and partner with our business community so that this can yield tangible financial resorts, results for Portage County. Because it's time. Thank you.
So before we get to the next speaker, I should have explained at the beginning that there is a three-minute timeframe for folks. I'm usually fairly lenient with that if someone's in the middle of something, but we have a full agenda, so for that going forward, we have a three-minute timeframe, so please keep your comments to three minutes. Next.
Lauren Gantz.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Lauren Gantz. I'm a resident of Stevens Point. I attended the meeting in April where we talked about the appointments of supervisors to this committee and I'm frustrated that once again, county leadership seems to reject experienced qualified candidates for this committee. Previous appointees were very willing to continue the work that they had begun on this committee, but they have been denied that opportunity. It's especially troubling that some former members were offered reappointment only to have those offers rescinded. When asked about that decision, the county executive explained that those rescinded offers were because Supervisor Morressi was placed on the board, suggesting that his position on that committee nullifies the need for any other members representing communities of color. That explanation relies on the belief that Supervisor Morressi can and should speak for all people of color in Portage County, an idea that I know he himself would reject because I do know Vinnie Morressi. Mr. Morressi is more than qualified to serve on the committee, but he can't speak to the experiences of marginalized groups to which he does not belong. If the DAI committee is to improve quality of life for all Portage County residents, it has to be comprised of voices from multiple minoritized racial and ethnic groups, including, for example, our Black and Hmong residents. There are multiple folks who have proven themselves dedicated in the past and it will be a tremendous loss to the community if they are not offered the chance to continue their work. I am very troubled by county leadership's decision to appoint individuals who do not represent marginalized communities as is required according to county governance. The executive has explained that these appointments stem from his concern for survivors of domestic violence and for those in substance abuse recovery. I think those concerns are very commendable and we should be working to address those problems in our community. They're very real. However, those individuals are not members of protected classes as defined by the Civil Rights Act. Their concerns can and should be addressed by other more appropriate county committees and organizations. I'm even more troubled by county leadership's decision to appoint those who have shown minimal interest in or understanding of EDI work, including those who have shown outright opposition to such work. I hear a lot of complaints that local government doesn't work for the people and these kinds of appointments exemplify that problem. County leadership seems determined to obstruct the DAI committee's ability to function. That obstructionism appears to be entirely political, tailored to appeal to the loudest constituents at the expense of the most marginalized and vulnerable. I'll reiterate, reiterate, excuse me, what I said in April. If we are to thrive as a community, stop brain drain, draw new people here, draw new businesses here, we need a functional DAI committee. I urge county leadership to take Executive Pavelski's campaign slogan to heart, put integrity in government. Respectfully, I ask that you show some integrity and stop these disingenuous efforts to prevent the DAI committee from serving its intended purpose. Portage County residents deserve much better. Thank you.
Jack Elsinger.
Jack Elsinger, resident town of Hall, spelled with a U and not an E. Just for today. Thank you for the opportunity to address the county board concerning the diversity affairs and inclusiveness committee nominations. I believe I have a fairly good understanding of the purpose and goals of the committee. Since its inception over two years ago, I've attended each of its meetings and was allowed to frequently give input regarding issues under discussion. With that experience and a careful reading of the county code of ordinances, specifically chapter 3.1.6, which details that citizen members that serve on the committee be, quote, "from marginalized and/or underrepresented communities in Portage County," it's my belief that the four citizens up for consideration are imminently qualified to serve. Therefore, I urge the board to approve these four citizens nominated by County Executive Pavelski. Thank you.
Keith Kudrowski.
Keith Kudrowski, Stevens Point. To Jack, to what Jack said exactly, these people selected absolutely fit the description of marginalized people. Right now, we got people, one guy screaming about party affiliation when he ran as a Democrat, so that's just, your argument's just nothing to me. These people absolutely are willing to serve on this board. They signed up. I look at the board, in the last year, 25% of their meetings, I went to all these meetings, 25% of them got canceled. So I don't know how dedicated these people were, but they canceled at least three meetings of the 12 in the last 12 months. So are they that dedicated? Are these just the people, are they not the right diversity for you? I mean, diversity is diversity. I lived out in DC, worked with people of every color, played with people, I was often the minority. I don't see that we have this big a problem in this county. I really don't. I don't get it. Anyhow, I think we should vote for these four people. They fit the marginalized group. John gave some thought. These people haven't met three times at least. Maybe he's trying to kickstart this group to get their meetings going so they don't skip these meetings. Thank you.
Christopher Bennie had indicated he wanted to give remote comment, but I don't see him on. Chris, are you on? All right. Next will be Laine Cosoleen.
I was asked to read this for her. Is that okay?
Mr. Chair, Laine actually just sent me a message saying she is online now.
Okay. Hang on a second. Is she?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Laine Cosoleen, District 25, Nelsonville, Wisconsin. I had the random opportunity to meet Makira, a citizen appointee of the Diversity and Affairs Inclusiveness Committee at Juneteenth last weekend. And by urging, she took time away from the celebration to speak with me about her service and what she'd like to see for the community moving forward. I walked away grateful for her willingness to continue to engage regardless of the obstacles and sometimes vitriol the committee has faced over the past two years. She has direct experience in the work and important perspectives to share, and I'd like to see her reappointed to the committee this next term. Anyone who's done social change work knows that it takes time to get on the same page, set goals, and make real progress for the group of people who come with differing perspectives on the ways to navigate a given issue. That's why I think turning over a committee that citizen members wanted to continue serving may set it back instead of setting it forward. Advancing this committee with some continuity will help shape the future of its work, which is what I'm hoping the board and executives wish to see. I want to know that our county government understands the need for and is willing to examine its policies, procedures, and services with a diversity and inclusiveness lens. Our backgrounds, personalities, life experiences, and beliefs make us who we are, and our differences shape our view of the world, our perspective, and our approach. The need for diverse perspectives to be heard, valued, and implemented is overdue, and regardless of opposition, will continue to shape our community and the country at large. I want to know that the county board and executives place value on the work and will support and enhance this committee's efforts every step along the way. Are you committed to leveraging our diverse assets and this committee to make Portage County a more inviting and wonderful place to live? I'm at a soccer game, so thank you for taking my response virtually. I hope they'll consider the citizen reappointment of Makira to the committee. Thank you.
Dave Idan, Stevens Point. Thank you, Mr. Chair, County Board, for the ability to speak. Every two years, we have the ability to change the makeup of the county board, which has been noted. It happened to fall upon the four-year period of a change in the county executive. We did make those changes. The county executive made some choices to change the makeup of this committee. The committee seemed to have stalled, and don't seem to me to be very effective, given the fact that some of the meetings just weren't important enough to hold. I think maybe it's time that we look at some changes to move the committee forward, some bright faces of people who are all qualified under the guidelines established when the committee was founded for said criteria and whatnot. I think it's time that we move forward, we bring some new faces into the committee, and I would urge you to vote to approve recommending these people and bringing this committee forward with those that we have chosen here today. Thank you for your time.
Makira Zarazua. I live in Stevens Point. Makira ends with an H. It's spelled incorrect on the agenda. So I'm here again in front of you to talk about this committee. Just for some background, Mr. Pavelski called me on April 21st. He told me that he wanted to reappoint me to the committee, and he asked me if I was willing to do so. I told him I was, and he said he was surprised because he had had a conversation with Supervisor Moresi. During this phone call, Mr. Pavelski admitted to me that he didn't know a lot about diversity issues in our community and that he didn't know if they were actually a big deal. I assured him that they were, and that it's easy to have that perspective, that it's not a big deal if it's not something you face in your everyday life. I will say for myself, I am a person of color. I work professionally. I've had 20 years' experience of working with people with intellectual disabilities, mental health concerns, physical disabilities, elderly, and victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. So if I don't adequately represent diversity in our community, I'm sorry that you feel that way. I don't have concerns necessarily about the people who are being appointed. My concern is that we are not allowing for continuity on this committee. The only person that's on this committee still from previously is Supervisor Honell, who didn't serve a full term. As a committee, it's a brand-new committee. This is only two years that we've had this committee in this county, and we just started trying to do the work. Meetings that were canceled were not canceled because of the members. We were notified by the chair that the meeting was canceled. So it's not a lack of us trying to do the work. I do feel, from my initial phone call with, my only phone call with Mr. Pavelski, when he talked about he didn't know if we even needed to have this committee, it makes me feel that the efforts here are to intentionally undermine the work that the committee has been trying to do. We've heard a lot tonight about workforce development and how important diversity and inclusiveness plays in that role. We can attract businesses, but we have to attract employees, and we have to keep those employees. And that's the work that the committee was working towards at the time of, you know, this new term. So in order for us to have some level of continuity with this committee, I feel that we really at least should have maintained some membership within it to continue that work. I'm not, I have to say, I'm not surprised that I wasn't appointed. I was surprised to find out after I'd already been told that he wanted to reappoint me. I'm disappointed, but not surprised. This is something that happens to us as people of color all the time. Thank you.
Jennifer Bushman, Stevens Point. My name was referenced tonight, so I'd like to share my qualifications this evening. I am a diverse Asian woman who is a leader for a highly reputable international company. I lead enterprise work in the diversity and inclusion space. As a leader in human resources and talent management, I work to attract, build, and retain a diverse workforce. I presented as a panelist at future workplace conferences, and as part of my work duties, I follow trends on workforce management, all of the stuff that we've been speaking about tonight. I can bring insight and best practices that we can use to leverage and scale for our purposes on this committee. Worthy of noting, I also continue to experience hate, name-calling, and I feel unwelcome by segments of my community. I was concerned for my safety while I ran for public office, almost all by people who don't personally know me, and these are all relevant lenses and experiences for an inclusion and diversity affairs committee member to offer. And this is quite the opposite experience of our goal of creating a welcoming community. I've served my community for 12 years. I've lived here for 12 years, and I continue to serve mainly through helping underrepresented and marginalized community members through volunteer organizations. I grew up from bigger beginnings. I worked hard to independently break a cycle of trauma from a troubled and broken family life and became productive and successful. If I can inspire anyone in my community to do anything similar as a result of this work and being on this committee, I'm here for it. Furthermore, if we really want this work to move forward, and if we really want to create equitable opportunities for marginalized and/or underrepresented populations in our community, let's afford those who too represent a marginalized and/or underrepresented population and have not yet served on this committee, an opportunity to serve their community in this manner. Thank you.
That's it for public input. That was the last one on the list. County Board Supervisor, Supervisor Madine.
I looked at the, I looked at the membership, and it says it's for the member, the mission of the group is to be from a marginalized or underrepresented community. During the discussion of organizing this committee, it generally centered around ethnicity, gender, and somewhat age. And so as we think in those terms, it's, it's, it's a marginalized group that we can all understand, all right? When I look at, at the, one of the members, and I'm going to have to be specific about it because I don't want, it's the one member that I would vote against if I could do it individually, and that is Dustin Mullen, and I'd just like to read what he put down as being part of a marginalized community. My name is Dustin. I'd like to be on the board to help make a difference. I struggled on and off most of my life with addiction and incarceration. I'm now four years clean and sober. I enjoy helping people and being kind to people. I hope to meet you all in the future. Hope you have an amazing day. Thank you for your time. It doesn't seem to meet the qualifications that I see for the mission of the group. I think it would be that that's a need that we have to serve on some of our committees and organizations. That would, that, a person with that characteristics would serve very well on the Justice Coalition, participate with Justice Works, get involved with the justice programs with Andrea, our star, our justice coordinator, or to work with Justice Point. We've all, there's not a one of us that could stand up now in front of us and say, I haven't made mistakes, haven't made any mistakes that I'm trying to correct and rearrange and encourage others' peoples not to take those, make those same mistakes. And that's the, that's the resume of the individual that we have before us today. I don't think that, that this committee should be a catch-all for individuals to serve on, to meet the needs of other programs that we have within the county. It doesn't seem to meet the qualifications, and that's the one individual that I would vote against if I could vote individually for that, but if I have to do it as a slate, then I have to, I have to vote against the entire slate. Thank you for your time.
Supervisor Gifford.
Well, when I look at the slate of appointments and replacements, what this looks like to me is just a total vote of no confidence in four citizen members that were in there before. So that explains why I'm going to vote no on this slate of candidates. And I'm assuming that the candidates will probably, the slate will probably get voted up, but I would like to stress that this committee has some real serious work ahead of it. I think what Ami said, it's a matter of life and death economically, is true. You know, we got this report right here from Dale Knapp in Forward Analytics. We pay this guy a lot of money to be our data analysis fellow. Right on the first page, it says, Wisconsin's path to growth over the next 10 years is through migration, which has slowed during each of the past two decades. Reversing this trend will be difficult, but needs to begin to be addressed today. Right? So when we look at who of this future workforce that everybody is craving, right, as we heard from the Farm, Farming of the Future Group, this new workforce is going to come from outside of our area. It is going to come from younger, more minority population, you know, the youngest generation coming into the workforce is 47%, comprised of people from communities of color, minority people. So this is a matter, it's not a matter of slogans, you know, and going through the motions and saying all the right things about diversity. It's about how this county presents itself to the people whom we would like to attract through migration into our area to become the future workforce. Because workforce development is the core of economic development because labor creates all value in this economy. So I just want to say, you know, if this new slate comes in, you know, for the committee, that they take this matter as a very practical, serious, business, social sciences sort of matter, and not just something for, you know, slogans and ideology and that sort of thing. So thanks for your time.
Supervisor Syke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So August 2nd will be 24 years clean and sober. Thank you. It, it takes a while to climb out of something like that, and from somebody that is going on 24 years clean and sober, those, those years, those first 10 years, you always are walking around with a stigma on your back. Run-ins with the law, whether, whether they're warranted or not in your head, it is there. You constantly believe that you're being watched. You constantly believe that somebody's out to get you. You constantly believe that you're not good enough to be a productive member of society. Well, we are. We are good enough. To the question of no confidence, I sat in on a majority of these meetings, and a question came up to the chair at the time, how do the people that are attending these meetings get to interact? And to Supervisor Moresi's credit, he is the one that approached the chair and said, Madam Chair, how do these people that are here get to interact with you and your committee? And she explained, Supervisor Moresi explained, and the people did try to interact, and they put forth a resolution to the committee. And that resolution, I believe was a year ago in July, sat there and didn't even get a motion or a second to be put on the table for discussion. After we went through the big deal of how do the people that are showing up here interact with this committee, and it was spelled out to them how they are to interact with the committee, and they followed those steps, and they weren't heard. So if there is a little bit of no confidence, I would think that that weighs a lot in on it. I'm looking forward to Supervisor Moresi, if he so happens to end up being the chair. I look forward to him bringing these conversations up and having these conversations on this committee, that he was so passionate that he had to have when this body, this board, decided to kick me off. So I look forward to Supervisor Moresi's So I look forward to Supervisor Maresi's willing, willing, willingness to lead and listen to the people of Portage County. As we remember, two years ago, when this committee was adopted, the chairwoman of the committee at that point in time said, in our conversations, that this committee could be for all. Yes, there are spelled out marginalized specifics here, but this committee could be for all. And I believe it is for all. It's for everybody in this county. And these, these four citizen appointees are fantastic appointees. They're fantastic people. And I'm sorry if you don't believe that being in and out of the correctional system is marginalized or not, but from somebody that has been there, trust me, it takes a long time to get that stigma off your back. It takes a long time for the community to accept you back in with open arms. So I don't have a problem with clean and sober and trying to help people become clean and sober because clean and sober just isn't a, it, it affects everybody. You, you want to put a, a stigma on it, does, does it affect the Irish more than it affects the Polish? I don't know. It affects everybody. We're in Portage County, central Wisconsin. We have law enforcement officers retired on this board. We have them in and out of this room. Alcohol and drugs does not discriminate. It affects us all. Thank you.
Supervisor Oki.
Um, just a comment that would echo one of the members that, uh, spoke about social change and away from the individual and looking at process. You've got a freshman committee here that started a forward movement. They have a strategic plan, I would expect. They're working on it, so to interrupt that with four new members just puts a halt to it. So I will speak on, on the behalf of process and let the process continue for a little longer before we really look at, uh, shifting, uh, the significant, significantly changing the makeup of it.
Uh, let's see. Supervisor Rockman.
Just, uh, just really briefly, I, there's no sense in reiterating exactly what Gifford and Oki have said. I'm, I'm in complete support of letting the process continue as it is, and the majority of the arguments I've heard, um, to the contrary are just, as, as a trained rhetorician, they're just littered with logical fallacies, and I'd be more than happy to have that dialectic after all of this about why that is, it's not necessary right now, but I would just, I just want to be on record to the board saying, "You, you know what's happening here, and please just don't let it." Like, I think we're better than that. At least I hope so. I've only had this job a couple of months, but I'd really like to hope so. Thank you.
Anybody? Supervisor Dodge.
I don't know any of the four candidates that are being discussed here, but I do know that two of them went through a pretty rough election time, and I guess I'm curious why that happened, since neither of them were white. And they took a beating, I'll tell you. I was, uh, privy to the progressive website until, or Facebook page until they knocked me off of it, which is okay. I was only there for information to start with. The other two, let me go back. I'm very concerned that the direction of this appears to be workforce development. Couple of months ago, we approved putting money in a project for training and education for workforce development. I would hope that all of the people here of diversity would be working with that group as well as the farm group that talked to us today for money. Same thing. Everybody's in it for workforce development. I kind of had the idea that when this was under the county umbrella, we would be looking at services that we offer and others in the community offer to marginalized people. Certainly, this Dustin could share a lot with us as to how he thinks the law enforcement system and those affiliated health and human services. That, I think, is the role that I expected this group to take, not workforce development. So I think the four people that John has put forward is appropriate. It just depends on your perspective.
Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the board for, um, allowing us to continue to talk about this. I really wish we didn't have to belabor these points. A couple of comments I heard, meetings being canceled. I believe Supervisor Johnson is on, online as well, listening in, and she, as well as I were at, well, she was at all the meetings, I was at the vast majority of meetings. And the reasons why meetings got canceled, to be completely honest, is because of the volatile environment and hostile environment that was created amongst members of the public and the committee, uh, while that, while those meetings were in session. I personally had to walk committee members to their cars for them to feel safe at the end of meetings because I could see it in their face and eyes that they needed support during that time. So if we want to talk about why meetings were canceled, when you're the loudest in the room and you come in in a show of force, people don't feel safe, period. Supervisor Johnson, being the bold and powerful woman that she is, uh, chose the path of least resistance when there wasn't, uh, uh, an agenda item to put on the agenda. Rather than just meeting, she would cancel meetings because, uh, honestly, I think some of the committee members were seriously scared to be there. That doesn't really happen with me. I've stood in the face of bullies numerous times, taken the beating, and I still get up. I will not be intimidated if I do lead this committee. Let me backtrack. April 21st, 2022, I made a phone call to Executive Pavelski requesting that I be placed on the Solid Waste Management Board. I said, "Hey, we've been doing good work. I'd like to be on that committee again." He said, "Yeah, you're on it. No bull, Vinnie. I fully intend to disband the Diversity Committee within my first month. It has no place in government." And then he said, "I don't even know what an underrepresented or marginalized community I reminded him that it was not under his purview and an overreach of executive authority, and then proceeded to explain why we have this committee and what underrepresented and marginalized communities are. I told him I am willing to take that journey with him if he's willing to go on it with me. I will work with anybody who is willing to work with me. I've said that since I've gotten to public office. This really makes me question the intentions of the executive. It makes me, it made me question the intentions of our executive operations committee when they made appointments to that committee as well. Forward to April 26th, the executive op supervisor, uh, committee appointments came out, and it seemed to be a death by a thousand cuts from our leadership. People showed up en masse to support supervisors who have experience and actually care about doing this work. After much deliberation, the Portage County Board did the right thing and appointed members who will not obstruct the process. The executive did not have any appointments prepared at that time, and it has pushed us to this moment in time today. I fear that that is going to happen again. However, if it means placement of committee members that truly want to serve in this capacity and do the very tough work of diversity, equity, and inclusion for our county, I am prepared to wait. Between April 26th and the beginning of June, the citizen diversity applications were solicited by the exec's office and the Portage County website. I myself fielded dozens of questions about the process and guided people to our somewhat convoluted website and, uh, appointment process. Fourteen known applications officially received by the county clerk and executive office. Citizen applicants were vetted by the exec and his assistant, uh, of which she did attend most of the diversity, uh, meetings and surreptitiously recorded, uh, many of them as I was told by the county executive. The executive assistant and, uh, executive and the assistant, uh, did interviews with some of the applicants via phone or in person. Questions and statements included, as we heard earlier, "How do you know Vinnie Maresi? Would you support LGBTQ information at the library during Pride Month?" And a rant against affirmative action and Katanji Brown Jackson. Early in June, the executive, uh, executives' diversity appointments were posted, um, on the June exec ops agenda. On June 3rd, well, I noticed that there was only four appointments proposed, which is normal. When we get appointments, uh, to executive operations, it's often just the people that, often not all the people that were applied, it was the, the highest ranking candidates. On June 3rd, I made a records request for all the diversity applications. Uh, June 7th, the executive operations meeting, Supervisor Weaver, Honnell, and members of the public, uh, gave considerable amount of pushback to the, the proposed appointments. On June 9th, I made a second request for the diversity applications, and I finally received those applications on June 10th from the executive assistant. On June 13th, I attempted to put out an olive branch to the executive and have a very frank conversation about the appointments to understand his thought process and reasoning. It was a very enlightening conversation, and it was very pleasant. We, we, we had a good talk, and unfortunately, we got disconnected after about 59 minutes from some phone error. I did note to him that all of the people of color had been removed, and most notably, two highly qualified black women and a highly qualified Indian-American man, uh, all working within the field of, um, workforce development, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and, um, working with folks, um, like Makira Zarazua, who works with folks from, um, marginalized communities as well. He said, "I did not even realize that," um, that he had, he had omitted them. Then told me that, since I was appointed as the person of color, I removed Makira. This is puzzling to me. I don't even know what that means. I just, I'm trying to figure out how can we not have multiple people of color on a committee with more represented, or representation in our community? I urged him to consider his appointments, especially since he had al- already promised to appoint Makira Zarazua to the committee and then rescinded that, uh, appointed, appointment once I was appointed. I did ask him to consider that some of his appointments said they would not support equity, diversity, inclusion positions in our community. I also asked him to consider that some did not know what equity, diversity, inclusion was when they were asked. Also, some did not indicate that they are members of, uh, underrepresented or marginalized groups on their applications and do not identify as such. Many of the applicants not only supported countywide, uh, efforts in regards to equity, diversity, inclusion, they actually were EDI professionals, workforce development professionals, AODA professionals, have been victims of racism and/or domestic violence themselves, but they also are members of underrepresented and marginalized groups. They would not be appointed. I would argue that we would have members of unrepresented groups in Portage County. Currently, if we approve tonight's appointments, we would have, uh, the committee makeup would be, uh, two Hispanic native, uh, white men, uh, myself, and, um, being one of them. We'd have two white women, white, one white and Taiwanese woman, and two white men on the committee. Our current county board consists of 21 men, 20 who are white men, one of mixed race, and four women. So what are we overlooking, missing, or ignoring? Committee consistence, consistency with returning members committed to doing this work, I really feel. After the executive told me he intended to disband the committee, I lost a fair bit of trust in the process that we were putting forward, that the people he was going to appoint truly had the best interests of doing this work in mind. I would love to be proven wrong, and I would, like I said, I will work with anybody who wants to work with me. We are also missing dedicated and proven professionals within the fields of EDI.
Close your mic.
I, I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mike. We're missing African-Americans in this group, Long-Americans, L, LGTQ Americans in this group, and many other, uh, members of other groups. To me, representation matters. I've heard it stated at the executive ops meeting that in order for this committee to be truly inclusive, we need more white men on it. Attitudes like this will inhibit the economic growth in our region, limiting our ability to attract and retain young professionals here in Portage County. Attitudes like this will be the Achilles' heel and lead to our ultimate demise if we allow, if we allow this fearful thought process to take hold. In order for our region to be truly inclusive, this committee needs actual representation from marginalized communities and on the Portage County Board. Through this committee, oh, sorry, I apologize, um, the Portage County Board needs to be willing to aggressively take on these workforce challenges that all of Wisconsin is facing right now and will continue to face. We are only asking for membership that will preserve the integrity and mission of this committee. And in its current state, it is unrepresented. So what do we need? A committee that is committed to doing this work and not obstructing it like our leadership would like to see happen. We need an effective leader to lead the committee in this arena that can foster difficult discussions without making anybody feel guilty about our collective history, yet being compassionate about how others have very different experience in this great American experiment. In order to do this, we need actual representation from marginalized and historically oppressed communities. We need their stories and experiences to guide our deliberative process in order to make wise policy decisions for our entire community. As the Portage County Board, we need to let go of our fear and suspicion and gatekeeping, gatekeeping, and hoarding of power. The diversity committee is not going to try to make you feel bad, guilty, or wrong about your lifestyle or life choices. This committee is not going to garner your wages or give it to somebody else, or not going to take your land and possession and redistribute your wealth. We're not communists or some kind of boogeyman. We're your neighbors, your friends, and your family. We're asking to be heard, to be seen, and to be able to simply participate as citizens and members of a functioning and deliberative society. I really hope that we can do that, and I think what we're asking of Executive Pavelski is just to reconsider a few of his appointments, uh, so that we can move forward and do the critical work that needs to be done in this community. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Syke.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to direct this question to you, and you can do with it, with what, with it what you wish. Once again, Supervisor Maresi is leveling accusations against citizens of our county. Could you please reach out to the sheriff and ask him of all incident reports coming out of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee?
Of all reports?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if Supervisor Maresi once again is making the statement that these members were feared to walk out, and that he had to walk them out, and that the, the people attending the committee meetings were... were in some way violent or threatening or I don't know what he's alleging happened, but I would like for you to please ask the sheriff if these accusations are justified. Now, and if you choose not to, that's fine. The other thing I want to bring up to this board is that this is not something that is uncommon for a county executive to do. For the board members that were on the board in 2016-17, under Executive Drier, she did not make reappointments to somebody that was sitting on the committee for six years. It is not uncommon for a county executive to change committees. Again, in 2016-17, Executive Drier at the time chose not to reappoint citizen members to committees. It happens. It was her prerogative then and it's our executive's prerogative now. And to the LGBTQ gay Pride Month at our public library, I believe that those questions were asked about the children's section. The children's section of the library. Now, I don't know how anybody here or anybody on the library committee falls on that, but if it's going to be stated and it's going to be brought up, please bring it up in its entirety, that it was in the children's section. How do you feel about this being in the children's section? So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask you to call the vote.
We actually like to comment before you call the vote.
Supervisor Weaver.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I went to the Executive Operations Committee meeting last week and asked some questions and I actually really appreciate John's willingness to talk about the issues and I don't think these are easy issues. I mean, frankly, from my standpoint as a white male with an education, I can't imagine how I could be more privileged. To the point that I have a hard time sometimes even feeling comfortable trying to talk about these issues out of fear of being quoted one way. Maybe my words are manipulated. I end up on some Facebook page. So I think it's hard and I don't think that John has an easy job. I actually had a chance to share my views with him on this issue directly and again, I appreciate that he's willing to, you know, to listen. I very much, and this is what I told John, I share a real concern about operational continuity of this committee, which is something that others have already expressed. And for that reason, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this slate.
Supervisor Splinter.
Seeing as we're voting on the decision-making ability of our county exec, and I know he's normally pretty quiet and laid back, but I think this is a good opportunity. I'd like to have John just come up and give us his thoughts because you're the elected county official and county exec and you might as well state your case for yourself.
Go ahead. Please.
Thank you so much, Chairperson Splinter. I was hoping to get an opportunity to speak. It's going to take me probably about 10 minutes. We got 10 minutes? Okay. When I first came into this position and within five days, I supposedly had to come up with four people to put on the diversity citizens appointees. I had no applications. All I knew was that three people were on it. I called Ms. Makira Zarazua and had a conversation with her. Basically, I was under the impression that I have to put one person on there so they can meet, so they can just form a quorum. Had the conversation with her. I thought it was an excellent conversation. I didn't have the application at that time. I did tell her that, yes, I'm going to put you on the committee. I would like to put you on the committee because I was under pressure. I basically made that decision out of fear. And I don't like to make decisions out of fear, but it was somewhat out of fear because I had to get, in my impression, had to get somebody on there. And so then, at that point, we had Don Budkowski, Mr. Soik, and Ms. Honnell on the committee. Actually, Mr. Soik was my representative of people who had been incarcerated, had had that kind of experience. I don't know if you guys even knew that about him, but that was my representation to bring that to the committee because I think those people who have been incarcerated, been involved in drugs, been involved in alcohol, are marginalized. They are underrepresented. That's why I got one of those selects. When it comes to you, Minister Supervisor Madine, why I chose Dustin Moe and his description is very, very limited, but after the conversation I had with him, he has actually come through addiction of alcohol and drugs. He's actually started, been through all the rehabilitation centers. He's actually started a rehabilitation house through Oxford House called OK Bluff. He's got the experience. He's got the self-discipline. He's got the tenacity to come out of that. And we just came through a presentation by Justice Coalition in which they're helping those people, but you know how much money they're spending to help eight to 12 to 14 people a year? A guy like this with this kind of passion, with this kind of experience can help numerous of people with a lot less amount of money, with a lot less resources because he has that type of ability in my impression, once I come into contact with these people. So, and also you couple them with some people who are amazing, have a passion for teaching, which I believe Jen Bushman and Miguel Campos do, and also the biracial extent that Jen Bushman has and the Hispanic representation that Miguel brings forth. That's where you got the ethnicity. When I bring forth also Valerie Hartman, who is a single mom, which I believe, single moms need all the help they can get. They are marginalized, underrepresented. You know, one of my biggest attributes here as county exec is to help, basically support self-government and personal responsibility and help families any way I can. Strong families make strong communities. So I got a lady who's a biracial, single mother, and also she's unfortunately been a part of domestic abuse. So that lady, I consider her triply marginalized, triply underrepresented, that we need to help these people in the community. If we help people with drugs and alcohol, I believe we help people of color. We help people of different ethnicities. We help people of different economic status. We help people of different races, different genders. I mean, it helps everybody. It's just not one certain class. And also, so now that we've got Mr. Chairman Maresi, Chairman Honnell, and Chairman Rockman on the board, we've got ethnicity diversity. I wanted to get some marginalized diversity on the board to get that done. And one of the things I'm actually working on is the county exec does not have any real definition. There's no job description for county exec. When I leave office, I can guarantee you, the next county exec, when he has to make appointments, because you have to make these appointments very, very quickly, he's going to have job descriptions on his desk with realization he's got to make these appointments very, very quick. You have to take a look at these things. Here's what you have to take a look at. I did not have that advantage. And I'm going to make sure that, again, there's going to be some standards and some procedures put in place for the next county exec to make those kinds of decisions, you know, better and more efficiently. That's why I did what I did. I understand your aspect of continuity. That's a valid point. But I also think that we're not taking a look at all aspects of diversity. I think some people are being very one-sided on their point and some people are looking at it their point. We have to look at all points. You know, Supervisor Maresi, I think you're probably going to be the chairman of this committee. I'm glad, that's why, you know, I value, we have some disagreements. That's what this committee is about, to try to bring those agreements and understandings into some kind of continuity. Only the aspect of me disbanding the committee. Now, I don't appreciate people taking my statements out of context and using them against me. If you do that, I will lose your trust and lose your ability to talk to me and value what you have to say. When I brought that point up about disbanding the committee, it was brought up on the point of incorporating it with other committees because one of the things, we have 36 committees in this county. There's a lot of other counties that have less committees. These counties are costing us anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000 a year. It also takes county supervisor time and effort to come to all these counties. For example, we've got the Department of Health and Human Services. We've got the Healthcare Center. Both of their premises are to make sure you take care of the vulnerable. One of the aspects of ICS is diversity committee is taking care of the vulnerable. If we could potentially put those, you know, this is just a suggestion. I'm not saying I'm going to do this right away. It needs to be taken a look at. We could potentially put those three committees somewhat together, put a little bit bigger group together, but it would save time, save effort, save money for the county and discuss all these things at once. So there's also aspects where you can put other committees together. There's some emergency plans committees that we've got three of them. We could probably make those into two. That's some of the things that I'm looking at when you say disbanding it. I'm looking at, again, combining it with others to make the county more efficient, more economical. I think I covered all the points that were brought up against me. Again, if you have any other questions, I'll be free to talk to you. Call my office. Makira, I'm so sorry I had to take you off, in my opinion, take off the committee because when I took a look at the whole aspect, because that's one thing as county exec, I have to take a look at the whole bird's eye view of the county. I see law enforcement, you know, dealing with drugs and alcohol. They're tasing people that some of the drugs they are taking doesn't even faze them. When I've got people going into the jail who are trying to sneak in drugs through reproductive organs or through digestive organs, it's crazy what's going on in the jail system. When you've got, you know, again, if we can lessen the drug and alcohol situation, which is a problem in the county, it'll make a better environment for economics, for welcoming people in. And again, it'll help the whole situation. Thank you for your time.
Supervisor Matt Jankowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you recognizing me here. And now I just lost my page. Give me just a second. Looking at what the definition of marginalized community is, and this comes from Minnesota Psychological Association. And they have a list, and of course, the list is not all-inclusive, but it's LBGTQ plus, people, senior citizens, racial-cultural minorities, military combat veterans, persons of below-average intelligence. Hey, I could be on the committee. Hearing visually and physically challenged persons, persons with serious and persistent mental illness, persons with cognitive impairments, gamblers and substance abusers, autism-spectrum persons, gifted and talented persons, persons with disfigurements, persons living in poverty, sex offenders, homeless, and felons. And of course, that's not an all-inclusive list and they list that on there. What I see is some people want a diversity committee, but they don't want the committee to be diverse. I think the more of those boxes we can check, the better off we are. The individual with, and I don't want to use names. I do not know these people. The individual with the substance abuse problem, that checks a box. We have an individual that is a single mom. That checks a box if you read on later in the Minnesota Psychological Association's thing here. You know, I think the diversity committee, the more boxes we can check from the more marginalized groups, the better off we are. And that's kind of what I am seeing happening here. We're not setting it up as a committee on race. That is represented. The racial component box is checked. You know, maybe we would need to reconsider and maybe a senior citizen on there or any one of those groups, but I think the more boxes we can check from more groups, the more diverse we can make the diversity committee, the better off we are.
Is that it? Supervisor Jankowski, you don't know how much restraint I have to use after you had the comment about IQ, so. Does anybody else have any other comments? There's no other comments. We have a motion on the floor and these are for, to push the four either forward or in a "aye" vote or a "no" vote would be to send the four back to the executive. So everybody understands the vote. All those in favor with "aye" and the clerk will call the roll.
Hakala.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Maresi.
No.
Okie.
No.
Olson.
No.
Rockman.
No.
Soik.
Aye.
Soslevich.
Aye.
Dodge.
Aye.
Dubek. Gifford.
No.
Hega.
Aye.
Honnell. Matt Jankowski. Jankowski.
Aye.
Laddick.
Aye.
Madine.
No.
Morrow.
No.
Peterson. Pataki. Prisbilski.
No.
Raygowski.
Aye.
Splinter.
Aye.
Weaver. I'll read the "no" votes just to make sure I got all these correct. For the "no's," I had Maresi, Okie, Olson, Rockman, Dubek, Gifford, Honnell, Madine, Morrow, Prisbilski, and Weaver. Correct. By a vote of 13 to 11, one excuse, the motion passes.
Next item, number 16. Reappointment of Jim Hop to the Board of Adjustments for a three-year term expiring April 14th, 2025, and I will need a technical amendment with it afterward, got it on the floor. I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Madine, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. The date is incorrect. It should be June 30th. Instead of April 14th, it should be corrected and amended. So I will take a motion to do so, to change it from April 14th to June 30th. Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. On the amendment, all those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Opposed. Amendment carries. Back to the original motion as amended. Any questions or discussions?
There was nothing on our pack there about this.
16.
It's a reappointment to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term of expiring.
No application.
He's being reappointed, I guess. You know, it's, we're working through bugs. We'll get better. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor with "aye" on the amended item, all say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 17. Appointing Maria Davis to the Office of County Clerk for the residual of the unexpired 2021-2025 term.
Resolution number 12, 2022-2024, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee. This resolution appoints Maria Davis as county clerk for the residue of the unexpired 2021 to 2025 term.
Motion by Supervisor Laddick, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Are you taking a food order? Discussion. This was a committee of four or five that had met with the applicants, and this is the name that had risen from the group, so. If there's no other discussion, Supervisor Maresi.
I'll just say, I've known Maria personally for years, and she is an incredibly competent and remarkable individual, so this is an easy vote for us, I believe.
And I agree. All right, so if there's no other discussion, all those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number eighteen, Town of Stockton Comprehensive Plan Amending the Portage County Zoning Ordinance MAP Amendment. Warblewski and Kiatowsky property, how'd they do? Kiatowsky, sorry. Thank you.
Resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a comprehensive plan amendment for the Warblewski and Kiatowsky property.
I'll take a motion by Supervisor Morrow, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. All those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number nineteen, Town of New Hope Comprehensive Plan Amending the Portage County Zoning Ordinance MAP Amendment, Anrude property. Anrude.
Resolution number fourteen, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a comprehensive plan amendment for the Anrude property.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Sislevich. Discussion. All those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty, Town of Linwood Comprehensive Amendment Plan and Portage County Zoning Ordinance MAP Amendment.
Resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a comprehensive plan amendment for the Town of Linwood.
Motion by Supervisor Laddick, seconded by Supervisor Soik. Discussion. All those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-one, Town of Hall Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Amendment, MAP Amendment, Grad property.
Resolution number sixteen, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a comprehensive plan amendment for the Guard property.
Guard, sorry. Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Morrow. Discussion. All those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number twenty-two, authorizing a contract for services for the Town of Grant, one hundred and tenth Street Bridge Replacement.
Resolution number seventeen, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Highway Committee. This resolution ratifies, approves, and authorizes a contract for the Town of Grant, one hundred and tenth Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Motion by Supervisor Laddick, seconded by Supervisor Hakala. Discussion. Supervisor Madine.
I just wonder if the commissioner is here, if we could just get a word on how that, how work fit within the budget. Are we seeing some major increases in our bids?
Nathan thought he would be on.
In most construction materials, yes. Fortunately, this bid was actually within five percent of the engineer's estimate. So they had given us the original estimate, and then actually tacked on fifteen percent contingency, just in case, and we only used five percent of that.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-three, Resolution Authorizing a Reorganization That Results in the Current Twenty-Hour Per Week Activity Supervisor Position to a Forty-Hour Per Week.
Resolution number eighteen, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Healthcare Center Committee and Human Resources Committee. This resolution authorizes a reorganization of eliminating the thirty-two-point-five-hour-per-week activity assistant and increasing the twenty-hour-per-week activity supervisor to forty hours per week.
Motion by Supervisor Sislevich, seconded by Supervisor Jankowski. Discussion. All those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-four, Authorizing an Agreement with Microsoft to Provide Office Three-Sixty-Five Services.
Resolution number nineteen, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes an agreement with Microsoft to provide Office Three-Sixty-Five Services for a three-year period.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Soik. Discussion. And I believe that we are kind of being held ransom to this, we don't have a lot of choice, is a good way of putting it, so. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-five, Approving Mid-Year Adjustment to the Twenty-Two-Two Portage County Salary Schedule and a One-Step Increase for Employees.
Submitted by the Human Resources Committee and Finance Committee, this resolution approves, with modifications and exceptions, modifications to the salary schedules, providing employees a one-step increase and increasing the salary schedules by one percent.
Motion by Supervisor Dubeck, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Discussion. No discussion.
I have a comment.
I'll take that. Supervisor Maresi.
I really do wish we could do more, because our employees are worth it, and we're competing with inferior jobs out there right now, and, but I understand the financial pinch we're in, so we'll keep doing our best to move those wages up.
I would agree that we have all, we have great employees, and that if there was more we could do, but I feel at the time that government is very easy for them to do this and try and make the problem go away, when the rest of the businesses really suffer because they have it from both ends. They have it from the salary, trying to compete from others, trying to sell a product that they can be competitive with, and their cost of materials continues to go up, and their costs that are associated with it, and they don't have the advantage of just having a committee say that we will give raises. So I struggled with this, but I also have to abstain from it, because I have a family member that would benefit from this, so. If there's no other discussion?
Online.
Oh, Supervisor Matt Chakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the comments that have already been said, but this is the world we're living in right now. You know, we gave our employees anywhere between two and two-and-a-half percent at the beginning of the year. We're currently in a salary study situation. Our salary study expert, the consultant that we hired, when it was brought to the HR Committee, she said that this is a good step towards a salary study. And you talk about industry not doing this, and I'm going to use one that's near and dear, because I sit on the Highway Committee. We start our labors at around twenty-two dollars an hour, twenty to twenty-two dollars an hour. There are companies right out there right now, construction companies, that are starting their labors at thirty dollars an hour. We are eight dollars an hour off of that. I realize we do offer some pretty decent benefits and things like that, too, there's some intangibles in that, but to make a statement that the private sector is not giving raises or can't afford to give raises, the private sector, some people that I know that work in the private sector are seeing eight to ten percent raises. I think one percent in a step, which equals about two-and-a-half percent, and it's only for half the year, so it's actually one-point-two-five percent, when it comes down to it, is small.
Anybody else? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. And I think, I believe, I explained why I abstained, I have a family member that would benefit from this. I don't believe anybody should use the abstain when they don't want to make a decision, but I've seen it used in the past, and I think it's worth calling out or explaining why, so. Number twenty-six, Approving the Addition of the New Healthcare Center Construction Project to the Twenty-Two-Two, Twenty-Two-Seven Capital Improvements Program.
Resolution number twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Healthcare Center Committee and Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes the addition of the new Healthcare Center Construction Project to the Twenty-Two-Two to Twenty-Two-Seven Capital Improvement Plan.
Motion by Supervisor Gifford, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Do we have somebody that wanted to talk, or is it Mrs. Rappi? Mrs. Rappi?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Nancy Rappi. Hi, Nancy Rappi, Stevens Point resident. I'd like to begin by saying, I know Vinnie Maresi. Vinnie Maresi represents me as a District One County Board Supervisor, and I trust Vinnie Maresi as Chair of the Healthcare Committee. No other project enjoys the overwhelming and enduring support the Healthcare Center does. That's been demonstrated through two surveys and two referendums. Asking taxpayers for money not once, but twice, and having them say yes to the first referendum and reaffirm that in a second referendum, it's unprecedented. Putting the Healthcare Center Construction Project on the Capital Improvements Program is the first necessary step to honor the mandate of the voters. There have been some concerns expressed regarding staffing. There's a state program designed to boost the CNA workforce, including tuition reimbursement, and by providing signing bonuses, and we can leverage that. The Healthcare Center Committee needs to be given the opportunity to do their work, and approval of this resolution and the next two on your agenda will allow them to proceed with due diligence. I urge you to vote "aye" on all three. Thank you.
Excuse me, Leszewski, Stevens Point. I'm here to strongly encourage support for the three resolutions for the new Healthcare Center. Recent staffing concerns at our Healthcare Center and inflation in our economy have raised some concerns about moving forward. I don't think we can project future employment numbers and the cost of living based on a small snapshot of twenty twenty-two. These are not normal times. Staffing shortages are occurring everywhere during the pandemic. Wars, inflation, and pandemics are not permanent situations, they are times that we work through. The government is addressing inflation by adjusting interest rates. COVID epidemic is being reined in with each passing month. Much of the war in Ukraine is going to be assured to win because of all the countries that are coming to its aid. Many who pulled out of the workforce for COVID are still expected to return to work. Not everyone can work remotely or afford to suddenly just not work. How many can truly afford to pass up health insurance pension benefits at the Healthcare Center for jobs at Pizza Hut and Burger King that only have similar salaries and no benefits? What we are seeing is a temporary adjustment in salaries that is being seen across all industries after decades of unfair low wages. Soon the wages will level off. Inflation will dial back when COVID is no longer affecting production and distribution of goods. It would be an awful loss to our community and our future if we panic now and hesitate moving forward with the Healthcare Center, and then find in two years the concerns of twenty twenty-two no longer exist. Any delays would be a very slippery slope and a surefire way to ending any new construction. I am very much fearful that ending construction is the real intent of any suggested delays by those who don't support the new facility. Maybe we will have to exchange steel for wood framing on the building, or alter the design to make it more affordable. We'll have to think outside of the box. With the new center, we will have the appeal of a modern, state-of-the-art facility to offer with shorter hallways, air conditioning, outside grounds for staff and residents to enjoy, good pay benefits, a five-star history, very supportive work environment that other facilities cannot offer. May we not be known as the officials who forever denied future generations of local, just down the street, skilled, modern healthcare, after it served all of our families well for ninety-one years? Please do not send us and our caregivers to god knows how far away for care, or to local facilities that are not licensed or staffed for skilled care, such as assisted living facilities. After ten long years of intense study and work to get to today, it is not the time to get cold feet and bail out. We cannot panic and let the COVID blip cloud decisions that affect all of us. The quality of care we and our family will either enjoy or suffer and go without will depend on whether the Portage County Healthcare Center remains here to stay. Please be part of continuing its long and stellar history and keeping it here, located just down the street. Thank you.
Amy Kessler.
Thank you for taking my pizza delivery order tonight. I came in kind of late. I was watching the meeting and debating if I was going to speak tonight or not. I had the honor of meeting with Mr. Pavelski and some of the residents at our Fine Healthcare Center last week, and when I heard earlier tonight that he lied because of fear, it really scared me moving forward with how many other people do that and what that can look like. We do have a crisis right now in our nation that is taking away healthcare workers, and at the very same time, we see that we're getting more and more older Americans. People are living longer, and we need care for the individuals in our community that you can trust and that you can count on. I pride myself on being a county employee, and we talk about staffing shortages. I can tell you, as a social worker and an activities aide, I have a lot of qualifications. And when I have been looking around out there, because I have, out of fear whether I was going to have a job or not, well, I have a family to support, I'm finding that there is a lot of competition out there, and the reason that I'm staying is because I trusted everybody here. I don't know if I should have been doing that now, but I'm hoping that I made the right decision by putting faith in my elected officials that represent our county. Let me put you just briefly through a quick day for me as activities aide and a social worker. I come in and I often see a new referral come through. This is an individual whose life has just changed drastically and likely traumatically in an instant. Walking through the aisle and tripping over, landing on a hip, and it's shattering because they came to speak at a meeting. Walking outside their front door in the wintertime because you're needing to get groceries, and you're eighty-nine and don't use Instacart or DoorDash to have your groceries delivered, and the ice buildup, and down you go. Where do you want to go when you're experiencing this brand-new experience in your life as an elderly person? Do you want to go to some privately-funded institution that can make decisions, no matter how they want, based on the top dollar? Usually, that top dollar is at the top, not down at the care that the person is getting. You have the opportunity to vote through the construction of a new building that will only allow us to provide better and greater care to the citizens of our community, and you are all my bosses. You get to make these decisions on behalf of the community. What better opportunity to have great care than when I have to look every one of you in the eye and say, "Thank you for the one-point-two-five percent raise," and mean it? I do. It doesn't sound like much, but with gas prices going up, we struggle. I have another driver coming into my family right now, so I have an increase not only in gas, but in car insurance, so I appreciate it. You know, I see the value of working for the county and being a part of the county, even in times that are kind of flip-flopped. It used to be the in thing to work for the county. It's not really so true anymore, I don't know if you know that, but our Healthcare Center is still it. It is the place to be, and we pride ourselves on that every single day. And with your support, we can keep that moving forward, so that at the time that your family needs it, or your neighbor's family needs it, or their neighbor's family needs it, we're there for each other. That's what we should be, a community. Thank you. you.
Any other discussion? I believe we need to keep moving this process forward to find out what our future costs are going to be. So this is the first step in that. Supervisor Maresi?
That's exactly what I was going to say. This is just acknowledging that this project exists. That's what the that's what this step is. So after that, we can take all the other people's comments to heart when we vote on the other things as well. So thank you.
There's no other comments? All those in favor? We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 27, resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures on the healthcare center project for proceeds of borrowing processes proceeds of borrowing.
Resolution number 22, 2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution declares official intent to reimburse expenditures on healthcare center projects for the proceeds of borrowing.
Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Ladak. Discussion. Supervisor Splinter.
I'm just a little confused. It's probably a financial thing that can be explained, but I thought the the healthcare, the expenditures to build a healthcare center were coming from the tax levy that was on the referendum, four million dollars a year, whatever it was. It raises coming out of borrowing.
Chris, there's a mic right there.
Borrow and then pay it back.
I hate.
Jennifer.
Jenny Josie is much smarter than than me, obviously. But I've been in several conversations during that process. Just understand, the way I understand this to be is this is the promise to pay the county back.
Okay.
So.
So so basically, think about it this way. We're right now not going out to get a loan to to do this just yet. So we're going to take some money out of the checkbook, all right, and pay the initial bills. But then when we go get the money, this is the promise to when we go get the money to pay us back.
See, the referendum.
It's an excellent question. I hope that I explained that correctly.
The referendum allows us to withhold 4-point levy, 4.5 million dollars for 20 years. But that we haven't started that yet. So there are expenditures that we're going to incur now. So the county is going to make those expenditures with the intent of getting reimbursed from the 4.5 later.
Clear.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 28, authorizing an agreement with Tegra Group, Inc., for an owner's representative for the construction of the new healthcare center building.
Resolution number 23, 2022-2024, submitted by the Space and Properties Committee and the Finance Committee. This resolution approves and authorizes staff to enter into and execute a contract with Tegra for owner's representative services for the construction of a new healthcare center building.
Motion by Supervisor Madine, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 29, authorizing a countywide program assessment and prioritization of Portage County programs.
Resolution number 24, 2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes a countywide program assessment and prioritization process.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Gifford. Discussion. Supervisor Honnell.
I'm overall supportive of this process, but I'm a little concerned that we have one committee, just one committee comprised of five people who will be responsible for both the assessment and then the prioritization. Is that a financial prioritization or or is it a prior? Are we setting priorities in terms of what's most valuable for our county? Because I would have a lot of difficulty with that.
So I'm going to ask for the chair.
So if you could expand on exactly what is entailed.
Our finance, Jennifer talked to me about speaking about this, but I can either have John or Larry. John, go ahead, John.
Again, Jenny had unexpectedly leave unexpectedly. But working this process, basically, we're putting a process to all the department heads of prioritizing their categories within their 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 departments. And then as far as which one, where they're going to prioritize the their their expenditures, and then if we ever 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 have to do potentially cut make cuts, those decisions will kind of be made almost automatically because they know what is is low priority. It's based also on mandatory services and non-mandatory services. And then once we go through that whole process of all those department heads giving us back those determinations of how they're going to prioritize their their own personal budgets, then we're going to present that to the Finance Committee as far as if you agree with these kind of prioritizations as far as how they outline them. And then the Finance Committee is going to take a look at this whole thing. Then is there going to be recommendation from the Finance Committee to come to the board as far as, okay, do you agree with the way we prioritize these things within the budget, within these departments? And, you know, you have plenty of time to take a look at it. But we're basically trying to come up with a system so that when either, you know, department heads change or when elected officials change, you've got kind of this prioritization that you guys already put in place where it's not kind of willy-nilly, but it's it's kind of set out in policy. So it kind of has a continuity and succession over time. Does that kind of answer your question?
It does somewhat. It 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 does somewhat. I'm a little concerned that the resolution simply accepts that we have to continue to live with that levy. And I wished that the resolution contained something where we were protesting that because it just seems like we're getting squeezed.
So, John, I'll take that one.
Okay.
So I know that Wisconsin Counties Association is getting more and more pressure. It acts as a lobby group for those all the counties in the state of Wisconsin. And there is an active movement to try and get some relief on that levy from the state because that's who's imposing it. So if we can get some kind of relief, it's coming, it's got to come at the state for for our levy.
Well, I hope that our I hope that we're very active in that effort because our needs continue to grow.
You'll probably see a resolution come before us to show our support in lifting that or at least having that discussion. And again, the counties that send those forward, it's just to send it to our lawmakers in Madison, asking them to take a look at that and and to be one of the things because you're right. And we've talked about this over and over and over and you've talked to me. I've used the example as that we have a pie, not a pie and a slice, but we have a pie. And how that gets divvied up is what keeps changing because that's what we have to live within. And that pie is actually getting smaller, seems to get smaller. So.
Okay.
Our costs continue to go up and we don't have a way of making or getting any more money to keep up with that.
Right. And I understand that. But I I'm also still concerned about the idea of a finance committee doing the prioritization. I know that we need to be fiscally responsible, but county government is not a business or a service to the community. And how we prioritize what we're funding, I do believe that the entire board, and I believe this process will bring all of this information back to the board.
Right.
That no decisions will be made without our full awareness.
No decision, no decision gets made without the board's approval. Period. I, you know, anything, any resolution, anything that passes is board approval. And this one, it's like I would encourage you to to attend when it's on the agenda, to attend the Finance Committee meetings for input. Zoom in or or call in or whatever you can do but for input. Or talk to any of the members, too.
Sure.
Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo Supervisor Honnell's sentiments. I think having just the lens of the Finance Committee is kind of exclusive, right? That we're just purely evaluating our priorities through a financial lens. That's that's not really the direction I feel like we should be going as a county board. I feel like we could throw together or think out a better process perhaps of an ad hoc committee with, I don't know, perhaps committee chairs show up and work on this together and we figure out the list of, you know, the top seven, eight, you know, standing committees that that are our biggest budgetary concern. I just feel like having it just come from the Finance Committee really puts that financial priority on things. And I agree, we have to be very financially good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. But, you know, there's a major human element as part of this that we need to we need to think about when making these decisions. We're not only being good fiscal stewards, but we're also we're in the business of taking care of people.
Supervisor Oki.
I'll just add this, that the prioritizing of programs, this might be just an upgrade because this has been done before. So department heads will put forth their programs. They'll look at mandated programs. They'll look at discretionary dollars. They'll look at that type of spending. But when it comes to decision-making, it's good to have a roadmap and really look at what what is required and what might and if something has to go. Sometimes programs are in place for 20 years and they become obsolete. And this becomes an opportunity to just review programs that are provided through all of the departments in the county.
Supervisor Rakowski, then Supervisor Dodge.
I agree with Supervisor Olkey. It's the point I was going to make as as the Chair of Finance is this is actually going to come from the departments and the department heads. They are the ones that are going to bring what they see as as their their most active and most needed programs from top to bottom. It's not really just the financial component only.
Supervisor Dodge.
I would echo that. I talked with Kim a little bit yesterday about this because her department is huge with many programs. So the department will be doing, I think, the evaluation and presentation of the of the programs. And then there are levels of mandatory and levels within discretion. So if something is mandated, that's fine, but we need to evaluate whether or not we're providing more than is mandated and is it a benefit to the taxpayer and the people of the county. So I think it's a really good exercise. I give my sympathy to the department heads and their staff. But it has been done before and I think it's a really valuable exercise.
And I think the timing, just getting, well, we're always in budget time, but just getting in and going through the budget to tie on this component to it is just another exercise at the same time. But the people that are on the Finance Committee, we have they are and a lot of our other major committees as well. So they will have input and be able to talk to you or anybody else with it. I'm sure they're going to make sure that their bigger committees have enough funding to do what they need to do. So there's no other discussion? You guys are going to try and get this a four-hour meeting, whatever you try. I'm going to make sure we get done before four hours. So all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, we probably could have got done earlier if the sheriff wouldn't keep turning the temperature down.
I think he falls asleep and he pumps it is what's happening. Authorizing 2022 budget amendments and transfers. And this 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 one, go ahead.
Resolution number 25, 2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes specified budget amendments and transfers. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
I'll take a motion in a second. I'll take a motion by Duback, seconded by Moro. I had a conversation with Jennifer this afternoon about this. It's 30 and 31. And she says this one was supposed to been a budget amendments were supposed to been on our county board that was canceled. So this this was already coming forward. So that's why we have two of them. One was for last month and the other one is for the next month. So that's why you see them. It looks like it's repeated. So there's no other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're on to the last page. Number 31, authorizing a 2022 budget amendments and transfers.
Resolution number 26, 2022-2024. This resolution authorizes specified budget amendments and transfers. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Ladak, seconded by Supervisor Moro. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 32, authorizing a final reconciliation for the fiscal year 2021 for all county funds.
Resolution number 27, 2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes the final reconciliation of $2,178,655 increase in fund balance to government funds and a $1,608,806 increase to net asset in the proprietary funds to properly close the 2021 fiscal year. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by, oh, geez. Motion by Supervisor Splinter, seconded by Supervisor Madine. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We should have that enthusiasm all the time here.